Welcome, everyone. Today is our regular city council meeting. It's Tuesday, March 14th, 2017. We're located at the Veterans Memorial Hall, located at 209 Surf Street here in Morro Bay. Welcome, glad to see everyone. We do have a quorum. All council members are present, so we'll call the meeting to order. And if you'll please, if we can start out the meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. And we're going to do our Pledge of Allegiance, and our guests are welcome to join us. I specified guests because we do have some guests out in the audience, and I just want to say welcome to everyone. Thank you. And next on the agenda, we do have a recognition, and I'm looking, I was looking over here, then I'm looking at Eric as well, so Mr. Buckingham, Eric, and I think the rest of council, we're going to go down to the podium. And we've got a little bit of recognition for some of our safety officers, and we've got some guests here that'll help us with that. So if we can step down to the podium.
The council would come on down right over here, and Mr. Endersby, Becca, Marcos, Jeremiah, Michael, if you guys would come up here, and Sean. So Becca, and then you three guys, it's Becca, the councilor, Eric, right next to the mayor. So this is Sean Aladio, did I get that right? Great Italian name. Sean Aladio from...
(inaudible).
From Wake of Fame Awards. And you had something else. From Wake of Fame Awards. Wake of Fame is an international organization that recognizes excellence in personal watercraft rescue. So that's personal watercraft, not jet skis, personal watercraft, and the use of those in rescue. And she's going to tell you a little bit more about the organization, and more importantly, about these folks standing in here.
We, with the Wake of Fame, actually, the Wake of Fame Awards started and originated in Morro Bay in the year 2004. In fact, in the same hall, we had put together the program for boating safety education using personal watercraft. And along with that, it goes in concert with our training programs that we provide. And Morro Bay is sort of the legacy anchor training zone because it offers such a diverse environment to provide similar to swift water rescue items that we could use for fixed objects such as flood rescue, extricating animals, livestock, humans off of boats, rocks, docks, trees, et cetera, along the shoreline. So you'll see us working along the rock line area at slow speed. And what's great about Morro Bay is that it has the ocean, which is quite lively. So it doesn't have to be surf, it doesn't have to be open water, it's sort of everything. And what's great about the water, the specific, how it comes here, is that it's very international in scope. So we have right now people here who are from Germany, the Canary Islands, Finland, Norway, and Australia training. So we've had over 32 nations come here to train. So we believe that this is really a heritage site for preservation of life and education. And with that, the benefit of that is that the harbor department, the fire department personnel, and the local county personnel receive training for using the personal watercraft, the rescue boats that they have, as one of the assets that they have for public safety. So with that, these gentlemen here are part of our training program, and they're also the people that save lives here on a weekly, daily, monthly basis. There was a very significant rescue that came down under a category that we looked at called the Heavy Water Awards. And the Heavy Water Awards are where a lifesaver's life could be lost, and definitely the loss of life can be expected from the survivors who would potentially become victims of an incident. And so that's one of our highest recognition awards. There was a rescue that was conducted by these gentlemen here that was at that level of risk, where these gentlemen could not have come home if one thing had gone wrong. So a testament to their training and their commitment and their local knowledge, but especially their teamwork. And they were awarded the Heavy Water Award. So not only did it go to the harbor department for Morro Bay, but the fire department also went to them as individuals. So I'd like you guys to talk a little bit about what that was like, to explain to people.
Just the rescue in particular?
Yeah.
So it was February. We got a call, there was a made a call on, over the radio, and we didn't get a location, just that they were outside the harbor somewhere. Marcos and I happened to be in the boat, and Scott was in one of the other boats. Scott took off north out of the harbor, we took off south, and we just happened to come across the boat, and we didn't know how many people were in the water, just that there When we did find the boat, Marcos and I decided it was my turn to jump in the water, and I made contact with the people in the water. Marcos went back to go get the jet ski, and Marcos came back with Mike, and they ended up picking with him and our other boat, Scott was operating, and the Coast Guard 47 boat, were able to pick up three adults and one child without being harmed. It was like six to eight foot that day. It was pretty decent, big enough for... Yeah, it broke outside the harbor, the entrance, so it knocked that boat over. And that's about how it happened.
So anyway, that's a testament to the training, because in our world, we have the saying that the life you save may be your own. So their training is very, very important. We truly appreciate that dedication that each of you carry and embody for the rest of the world, pretty much. So really, thank you very much. And with that, we inducted them into the Wake of Fame. And we also gave a partnership award extended to the City of Morro Bay for hosting all these amazing trainings that we've had since 2004 here. And the trainings average, on average, are about five days in length. They have a training going on right now. The daily average of hours are 10 to 12 hours of training a day. And then we do night qualification training as well, because most people will come home, you know, at dark, and they're missed, and then the call goes out to look for them. So really want to thank the City of Morro Bay for their openness and transparency. Also, to all the people that serve, talk to these food at the restaurants, give the discount to the students, which really helps those who travel internationally. All the local restaurants really pull in, and also the hotels. So we're really thankful to have that support from the community. It really helps the world. It's not just here in America, it's a global pursuit of life-saving excellence. So, and also, we gave another award, the Morro Bay's Partnership, the Harbor Department. And so those, all of these individuals and departments in the City of Morro Bay were inducted into the Wake of Fame. So we like to... Eric, anything you want to say?
Thank you to my staff, and the fire department, and all the partners for this recognition of Sean and Wake of Fame. What we do every day, it looks nice to recognize, thank you.
Mayor, would you like to lead the council through to congratulate these folks?
We need to show the paddles. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys. You know, the certificate, appreciate it.
Great job, guys. You've been working while you're getting your award. I love it, you're doing so much.
Thank you. Yeah, you got it, so.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I get to hold one?
Yeah. What about the other sphere?
It's too heavy.
Eric?
Okay. I think we're just taking it, goes back to the audience.
Okay.
Sean, thanks, thanks again. And just to recognize some of our guests, I had, thanks for the invitation to come out of the weekend when you were doing your awards presentation. There's several in the audience, I just want to extend a thanks. I won't remember all your names, but I know we have Australia, we've got the Canary Islands, we've got Chile, we had Germany. Name some places where we have, please raise your hand, tell me where you're from. Where are you from?
Stand up, operator. I'm from Norway.
Norway, Norway. Anybody else? We had Chile, we had Canary Islands.
Finland.
Finland. Anybody else? Please? Germany, Germany. Thank you very much, thanks. That's just, that's just tonight. Canary Islands, thank you. And Chile.
Chile.
Right. Chile, thank you. So we have, we have international presence here in...
Australia.
In Australia. Four from Australia, thank you. So here we have an international center here in Morro Bay for water rescue safety, so pretty cool. Thanks, guys, for taking the time to come here tonight during this presentation and recognition for our guys that did a great job. So it makes the world smaller seeing everybody here tonight, thanks very much. And with that, we'll get on with the rest of our meeting, so not to bore you guys, but we've got the rest of the meeting to get to. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for that pause there. Moving on, closed session report, we have no reportable action, there's no close to close session today, so thanks for that. And then Mayor, council members' reports and announcements, and I'll start off to my right, Marla.
Okay. Well, I want to report some really good news. If any of you have noticed those signs that are up around town, that basically are announcing the fact that we are finally going to be paving our streets. And it starts today, goes on for the next month or so, and so watch out for all those paving trucks, but it's great news, and we had to wait, you know, because of the rain. So it was supposed to happen last November, but it's happening now, so that's great news.
Thanks. Now, okay. Matt?
Well, Eric, Eric, excuse me, I don't know if you could provide a brief update about the current ongoing dredging, and about how long people can expect this to be going on?
Sure, be glad to. We just had a meeting with the dredge contractor and Corps of Engineers this morning. They have roughly seven to nine days left where they are in the Navy Channel, which is off of our piers. We have another three days left down off Tylen's Park, and then they'll be moving out to move about 110,000 cubic yards in the sand trap area, which is the area off south of the groin jetty, you know, between that groin jetty and the south jetty. So they're probably going to have a good 12 to 15 days into there. And then, hot on the heels of that project, Corps of Engineers dredship Uquina is coming in the beginning of May, so the Uquina will be getting the harbor entrance and the entrance channel. So once that's all done, Uquina's going to be here for about 30 days, once that's all done, we'll be nice and clean and in good shape.
Okay, thanks. Red?
Yes, I'd want to recognize one of our special Morro Bay citizens tonight, Glenn Silaway, for the extraordinary things that he does for our community. Glenn is president and a founding member of the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance. He is an active member of the Citizens Beautification and Heritage Committee, and he's currently developing history panels and placing them around town. He is also acting as president of the Historical Society of Morro Bay, and as part of that, he's bringing a proposal to Recreation Parks Commission this week to name one of our city parks after Franklin Riley, who founded the City of Morro Bay. Glenn also works on the General Plan Advisory Committee, and he works on Saturdays with Morro Bay and Bloom. So I just want to thank Glenn for all the great things he does to help our community. I also want to report a couple of meetings that I have had attended since last council. Last week, I had a chance to chat with Assemblyman Jordan Cunningham's legislative assistant, Jocelyn Brennan. It was an informal meeting, there was no agenda, nothing that was pre-planned. I was invited to drop into their office to say hello, and I did take the opportunity to convey to Jocelyn where Morro Bay stands with our current financial situation, that we're getting hit kind of from three directions right now with the CalPERS additional funding, with having to raise funds to complete the water reclamation facility, and our ongoing problem with paying for street repairs. And I don't expect that Jordan is going to introduce legislation to help us with any of those, but just, he needs to know the situation for one of his constituent cities. I also got to meet last Friday with Eugene Judd, who is a Cal Poly professor, and he teaches a civil engineering graduate class. And what Mr. Judd proposed to do was to take on as a class project this spring, a circulation study for our downtown waterfront area, from the Embarcadero up to Main Street and extending to the Triangle Parking Lot. And this is a great thing for him to volunteer to do for us, and it accomplishes a couple of goals that I think are important to the city. One is, we have had some concern about what our circulation should look like on the Embarcadero as we develop our strategic plans. And the other is that we are able to use a Cal Poly graduate engineering class as a non-paid consultant, and that's going to help us to develop our plans. I want to say again that I will have office hours this coming Saturday at Sun 'n Buns from 9:00 until 10:00. That's open for anybody to come and talk to me about anything. And then after that, I will walk around to various businesses and see what concerns people have. Two weeks ago, I heard concerns about our city revenues, about truck deliveries blocking the streets, concern that if we invite a large developer to work on one of our plans, that we ensure that we don't get something started that gets abandoned partway through. There is concern, of course, about the cost of the water reclamation facility, and our businesses are still reporting a slow winter season. It's, so it is important, again, I'll say, help your neighbors shop locally, keep our money in Morro Bay and keep it circulating. And I want to say about our street repair project that started today, I want to confirm that that is all Measure Q money, that there is no money that comes from our general fund for street repairs?
That is correct. There's a small Cal recycle grant that funds a portion of that, because we use recycled tire in the chip. And they, the company completed their first day's worth of work. They managed to, before the surface temperature got too cold to lay down emulsion, they're getting, got most of the streets done, with the exception of San Juan on today's schedule. The schedule can be found on the city's website under Hot Topics. It has three colored pages, a different one for each week's worth of work, to let folks know when they'll, pavement coatings will be in their neighborhood. Also, there's door hangers that go out that week prior to let folks know that they'll be inconvenienced for the day. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Just wanted to put a shout out to our city crews during all the storms that we've had. We really fared pretty well through that. We had some trees go down, but I know there are a lot of folks working on that, so I just want to say, put a shout out to our crews and say thanks, and then thanks to the community for their patience and all that, because we did endure some of the power outages. And then I'll look to Mr. Buckingham and Eric for their updates on Seamink, and then I'll just go ahead and give some brief comments on that.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think I'll start with Eric on the actual Seamink part of our Washington visit.
Thank you, Dave. So, great meeting. We went out, most of us went out Sunday night, came back Friday, had some great meetings. I'll just rattle off a quick list and kind of tell you the Cliff Notes on it. John Armour, Director of Marine Sanctuaries, we had a lunch keynote speaker, Mike Simpson, the House Subcommittee, Chair of the House Subcommittee on Energy and Water Appropriations, OMB Chief of Water and Power Branch, staffers for Congressman Carver Hall, Congressman Panetta, Congresswoman Pelosi, Senator Harris, Congressman Correa. In person, we were able to meet with Congressman Carver Hall, House Majority Leader Kevin McCarthy, Congressman Barrigan, Congressman Alan Lowenthal from the Ports Caucus down LA area, Army Corps of Engineers Director of Civil Works, Chief and the Chief of Navigation Branch, Civil Deputy of South Pacific Division. And then individually, that was with the Seamink group in general, the larger group, the quorum of us, and then individually, the City of Morro Bay, we had meetings set up with the Corps of Engineers, staffers for Feinstein, Carver Hall, Noah Sanctuaries, again, Director of the Sanctuaries Program. And we had a happenstance run into Dianne Feinstein in the hallway, as we're pounding the halls there. The good news is, we're fully funded, as you know, for this dredging that we're doing now. We're getting dredging underway here in May as well with the Corps ship Uquina. We're putting in for $3 million for FY18 to bring the Uquina back next year, so that's looking good. Corps of Engineers has got that in their work plan, hopefully that'll be submitted to OMB for the President's budget. Overall, California is pretty well positioned to receive additional infrastructure funding. As you know, one of the President's big initiatives is infrastructure, and hopefully that trickles down to the Corps as well, we'll see how that plays out. In general, our concerns were heard about Corps of Engineers and other infrastructure funding, and the California ports all working together as a system. Instead of all fighting each other for the money, we all go there pretty well and advocate for each other as all being systems, parts of the system. So in general, it went very well, and I just applied for reimbursement from the Cable Committee for our trip costs for the three of us to go, so hopefully knock on with, that'll come through. But otherwise, I think we had a very productive time.
Great, thanks, Eric. Another key element of this DC visit was to begin to advocate more strenuously on behalf of funding for our water reclamation facility project. Your approval two weeks ago tonight to enter a contract with the Ferguson Group paid off immediately and quickly. So they, by, by the following Monday, they had opened a number of key doors in the Senate, and a office visit with Senator Harris's office, among others, and were able to, we spent probably an hour and a half with two key members of the group, both whom are of significant experience in water-related project funding in the, in the federal government. What we identified with them was, so as you'll recall, actually, back in January, I reported out on a visit I made to Sacramento, really along the same lines, looking at state funding opportunities, including loans and grants. And one of the things we came away from that visit to Sacramento was, there's not a whole lot of state money left, and, and the Water Board folks in Sacramento had said, you would be wise to continue looking around and having backup plans, especially for our state revolving fund loan. We, Ferguson Group helped us, and we had some, some good meetings identifying federal loan programs, specifically the WIFIA loan program, that is an EPA program that is very similar to the state revolving fund, and, and could result in long-term, low-interest loans with some other cost savings for our Wharf project. Additionally, we've got, and in fact, we owe an initial letter of interest in 14th of April, I think it is, to, to start the process on that. So it was great timing to, to get engaged with Ferguson Group fairly recently. We're also now pursuing Water Smart Grant options. Water Smart Grants are administered by the Bureau of Reclamation under the Department of Interior, and we've got a, those grants, the funding situation in DC is challenged to say the least, so I, so I want to be careful on being optimistic, but just reporting facts here. The Water Smart Program can grant up to $20 million or 25% of a project cost through Water Smart Grants. So that's a pretty significant grant amount, and we have a phone call, again, set up by Ferguson Group, with the Bureau of Reclamation Office in Sacramento next week to, to begin to start that process, and for them to review what will then be our hot-off-the-press master reclamation plan that they will need to certify locally before we go, not physically, but go back to Washington to, to work toward a Water Smart Grant. That's probably plural. The way they like to work is small grants at the beginning, and then do those year after year after year, but four times five is 20 million, so if we did 4 million in the first year, did that for five years, that'd be fine. A couple other leads with USDA, and we'll go visit USDA locally here in Santa Maria. Little bit more challenge there probably, based on our population size and type of projects and other things. And, and one super-long shot at something called 219 Money through the US Corps of Engineers. But I'll say that the Brad Swittemberg, the Corps of Engineers Senior Executive that we sat down with, when we were talking dredging, he was happy and nodding his head, and we started talking about the Wharf project, he got excited and took a page and a half of notes and said, make sure you go talk to this guy. So, so we're sniffing down every lead that we can, and it was, I think it was a very positive visit with, from the water reclamation facility funding perspective. Mr. Mayor?
Great, thanks. And thanks for all the good work, and as always, Eric, for your diligent work on, on behalf of the harbor and our Seamink. I just want to say a couple of things. So I've been privileged to be able to go on behalf of the city for five years, and this year was quite a bit different. I don't need to speak too much about that, but early on, I met with some former mayors, Mayor Yates, Mayor Peters, and Mayor Anderson in regards to Seamink, and all of them share the same enthusiasm and commitment that the city should maintain that proactive role as a member with Seamink, and continuing that march to Washington DC. And, you know, I would share those same remarks to this council and ensure that they, that we know that, and I think that's part of the message for me as an elected, on your behalf, to go there, that certainly are, you know, we have great staff that can go, but I think it's key that in Washington, that we do have the electeds go, it's, it's recognized, I think that's part of it. And I think it's, and as Mr. Buckingham was speaking to the Ferguson Group on working on their, it's just a process and way we have to be active in understanding what things are available for a project like the Wharf, and what funding's available. But the unique thing about Seamink that no other state does, if, if we don't, all don't know this, and for the viewing public, is that Seamink is California Marine Affairs and Navigation Conference. So it's a consortium of all the ports and harbors in the state of California. We are a member, so we, as a state, we've combined together to advocate on behalf of all the ports. The premise is that if we're, if we're all operating, if we're all healthy, then we operate as a system. As an example, if our port failed, then our fishing fleet would have to go to another harbor, and if that harbor got filled, then maybe recreation fleet would go somewhere else. But the other part of that is that the primary funding mechanism for all the dredging comes from a Harbor Maintenance Trust Fund that is all funded through taxes from container ships. So the container ships primarily through Long Beach, LA, Oakland, we have, we do have Point Wanami and Stockton, but even... have Point Wanami and Stockton, but even though those are the funding source, we benefit from that source. But what's interesting is the recognition that we still have to be able to maintain all the ports, because whether or not we're actually a contributor to that Harbor Maintenance Trust Fund, we are a contributor from the standpoint of our fishing fleet. You know, there's still, we still do have fish that will probably make its way through the, one of those container ships in one way or another, and maybe in a small way, although a lot of it is local. But I just want to speak a little bit to the CMAK portion of the trip and the advocacy on behalf of harbor dredging. So, that's my spiel on the CMAK portion. I just want to say thanks for all that, and thanks to the cable grant opportunity that funds that, and certainly if, you know, that's something that, it's a good investment on behalf of the city. And as the council did take an action to commit with the Ferguson Group, you know, that's, we're at the beginning stages of that, and I would envision that whether it's Stockton or other trips back to Washington DC, that'll be beneficial, and glad to see the council committed to that. So, those are my comments on CMAK, and those concludes any announcements. Anybody else for council remarks or anything? Seeing none? Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to presentations, which none are scheduled for tonight. And for public comment, we, for folks there for public comment, I do have some speaker slips, and we have speaker slips in the back. We're going to start up public comment with our owners from the Siren, Paul and Kelly. Are you guys going to come up? So, we open up our public comment with a business spot, and Paul, Kelly, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Staff. Thank you very much. Siren?
Is the microphone, how, can we make sure that microphone's on?
Can we hear that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, after 371 days being closed, first of all, we're Kelly and Paul Boyclaire. We're Morro Bay residents, and we're in our 10th year living here, so that still makes us rookies, but we're happy to be here. Morro Bay is our home, and we've dropped anchor here. As most of us know, we purchased the property at Harbor in Maine, the old Happy Jack's building, two years ago, and began a renovation that lasted a little over a year. We've been operating now for a couple of months, and we're happy to report that we've been thankfully well-received. Thank you. Thanks to the Chamber for this time here tonight, and while this would normally be an opportunity for us to tell you upcoming events and things like that, Kelly and I thought it would be best to finish business with the city. We do have unfinished business. As everybody knows, it took a little over a year for this to take place, and it's finished now. Daily, multiple times, we'd get asked why it was taking so long, and most people, wouldn't you agree, would say, "Oh, it's the city, isn't it?"
It's the city. It's all the city's fault.
Yeah. And we were so happy to tell them, we wished all our vendors were as efficient as the city. So, our unfinished business tonight is to say thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. It was a marvelous experience for two people that, you know, did this out of our savings. We are not experts in the field of construction by any means. The city was gracious at every turn and efficient. Whenever we needed an inspection, Carl was there within a couple hours, usually sooner than that. If we had an advisement, we'd go to Scott and get it. He was always available. Joan was a big part of our help team at the city as well, so she needs to get recognized. But everybody in the office was cheerful about it. Specifically, too, we want to thank our city manager, David Buckingham. You wrote a letter. Go ahead. It was a game changer for us.
We're running out of time.
Yeah.
But, thank you. It had to do with the ABC, and you saved us. Thank you. And to Jamie, thank you for your support. To everyone in Morro Bay, thank you for your patience, for your well wishes, for your support. We just, we want to do well for the city, and we're so grateful. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul and Kelly. Great job. That's a great way to start off public comment. So, I have two speaker slips. This is, I know it says Agenda Item, WRF and Economic Development. I'm assuming this is for public, regular public comment. So, I'll call you up for public comment. So, we have Norma Whitman. Please come on up. Thanks, Norma. And then Jeff Heller.
Thank you, Norma Whitman. I'm a resident of Morro Bay for the past 25 years, and I attended the tenure budget forecast presentation recently, and I'm aware of the budget crunch due to the CalPERS crisis, and frankly, the future budgets look grim, don't they? But as the council and staff seek to increase revenue for the city, please keep in mind the importance of our natural resources and environment as a unique attraction for visitors. Since tourism represents a large proportion of our revenue stream, it's important to realize the value of the flora and fauna and our location on one of California's most pristine estuaries. As a State Park docent, I interact with visitors from all over the world during the summer at the Sea Otter Exhibit at Morro Rock on weekends. As a member of the Bird Festival Board, I chat with many of the 600 birders that come to Morro Bay for the Winter Bird Festival in January, most of them from out of the area, or at least from out of the immediate area. You may not realize that Morro hosts Audubon Society every year. It takes part in the Christmas Bird Count, and that we are in the top 10 nationally for the diversity of birds in our area. Much of southeast Arizona tourism exists because of the visiting birders. They are a substantial target for tourism here, and they have dollars to spend. They're not all staying at the State Park. One of the proposed revenue streams in the tenure forecast was the development of a high-end hotel complex in the area of the Embarcadero with perhaps as many as 50 rooms. Projected revenue was based on a 75% occupancy rate. Morro Bay's average rate is 63%, according to city statistics. Let's not put all of our hopes in only one direction as we seek revenues, and whatever development takes place, please be sure we do not in any way despoil the nature of our city and the surrounds, for this, in fact, is our very unique attraction. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Jeff Heller?
Good evening. I'm Jeff Heller. I'm a member of the General Plan and Local Coastal Program Update Committee, Citizens' Advisory Committee. I can never get all that out right. Brad, I want to commend you for your deal that you worked out with a student at Cal Poly for doing the traffic plan. I think that should be the business model for the city. The resources at Cal Poly are enormous. I mean, they're all doing projects. A lot of them, they'll just do it for a small fee or for free, and it's just great information. I have nothing against consultants, sorry, guys, but anytime we can get the expertise that we need from Cal Poly, let's do it. I mean, they're there. You know, I have relationships. I know a lot of people here have relationships there as well. Very positive meeting. It's great living in a small town where you can come to a meeting like this and talk to the city council. Moved here from Los Angeles about six years ago, and obviously, I wouldn't be speaking to the mayor if I still lived down there, so I appreciate living in a small community. I don't normally get off my couch and come to any more meetings than I have to unless it affects my pocketbook. And kind of the elephant in the room, I think, at every meeting in the city should be our pocketbook and the elephant in the room, which is the water reclamation facility. I kind of haven't paid much attention to it, which is my bad. I've been busy with the G-PAC and my life, but recently, when I saw in The New Times that it was now going to cost $120 million, when I thought it was 70 million. And then I talked to the city, and I think, Dave, you sent a letter saying you're estimating now 150 to 166 million. I mean, this, these are big dollars, and it's going to have an enormous impact on the city for generations. I think it has the potential to bankrupt the city, and I think to a certain extent, the train has left the station. I believe the city's committed between 6 and 8 million so far, just in soft costs, which is not chump change. I was thinking the other day, what do you do when something like this is going on? And by way of background, I've worked for many years for consulting firms. I'm a licensed contractor, worked in Los Angeles on many of the major projects for consultant firms, which I made enough money to be able to live here. But now that it's my money coming out of my pocket, I'm a little more skeptical about what you get from a consultant and whether there's real value there. So, sorry, guys. So, back to the reclamation facility. I think there's a chance, one last chance, for us to really look at this project one more time, and I have an idea I want to throw at you, and I mean this with all good intentions. I can become one of those people that'll fight this thing all the way, but I don't want to do that. My suggestion is this, that for the next 90 days, we put the project on hold, and we create an executive committee that will review and investigate all the documents in place, go back to the Coastal Commission, maybe with some new technology, see if there's any chance at all that we can keep the plant where it is. Talk to the folks who own the properties that we've negotiated with unsuccessfully to retain, and the only way to reduce the cost of this thing is to install it much, much closer to where the existing plant is. I'm not ready to give up yet, and I think the city shouldn't give up yet. There's new technology out there. There's a great design-build conference in Minneapolis in two weeks on wastewater treatment facilities. On April 8, there's an expert from Stanford-
I'm going to have to ask you to conclude.
-coming to the end of Morro Bay to talk about new water and wastewater treatment technology. There's a window to take advantage of it. Otherwise, I can't support the project as currently designed, and the direction is a great concern to me.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Anybody else? I only have two speaker slips for public comment. I don't have any more looking. None? Okay, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Any council comments, remarks? Seeing none? Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our consent agenda, and I'll look to see if there's any items to be pulled. Any items from council? None? I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
With a motion by Mr. Davis.
I second.
Second by Ms. McPherson. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Moving on, next item on the agenda, item B1. This is the Adoption of Urgency Ordinance Number 610 and Introduction of Ordinance Number 611, Reauthorizing the Public Education and Governmental, which is the PEG, Access Channel Fee. This is from our city attorney. Oh, that's correct. So, thank you for that. So, since 7 o'clock, pardon me, so this is a public hearing item, and legally, we can't start this till 7:00, so we can actually move on to item C1. Item C1 is Adoption of Personnel Rules and Regulations, Employer and Employee Relations Policy, Policy Prohibiting Harassment, Discrimination, and Retaliation, and Drug-Free Workplace Policy.
That's a mouthful, huh?
Yes, it is. Thanks, Dana. Thanks for all that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you said, the item before you is Adoption of Personnel Rules and Regulations and Related Policies. The purpose of this item, excuse me, is to establish clear, a clear set of policies that meet current legal requirements and support a productive work environment. Staff recommends the council adopt Resolution 7-17, Establishing Personnel Rules and Regulations; Resolution 8-17, Establishing Employer-Employee Relations; Resolution 9-17, Adopting a Policy Prohibiting Harassment, Discrimination, and Retaliation; and finally, Resolution 10-17, Adopting a Drug-Free Workplace Policy. The current Personnel Rules and Regulations consist of eight separate resolutions that were adopted between 1974 and 2005. In 2014, with the assistance of Liebert Cassidy Whitmore, staff began a comprehensive review and update. That work went on until June 2016, when a draft version of the Personnel Rules were provided to the employees, and they were allowed 90 days to review those policies and provide feedback. Feedback from SEIU and the management group was reviewed, and further edits were made, clarifications were made. That policy review led to the decision to create a standalone drug-free workplace policy and a policy anti-harassment and discrimination policy, as well as to update the employer-employee resolution, which was adopted in 1969. Aleisha and Wynder conducted a final legal review of the policies, and then they were provided back to the employees on February 1st for a final review. Staff presented the final draft policies to the council as a consent item at the last meeting to allow ample time for review and comment. Based on the feedback that was received, the following changes were made. Personnel Rules Section 4 has been clarified to ensure that department rules are reviewed by Human Resources and approved by the city manager. Personnel Rules Sections 15 and 18 were clarified to include, in the drug-free workplace policy, the abuse, use and abuse of legal drugs. And then finally, the drug-free workplace policy was amended to include volunteers. So, next steps. Upon adoption, these policies will be provided to all city employees via their city email account. They will be asked to sign an acknowledgement form acknowledging both receipt and agreement to fully comply with the terms of the policies. For those employees who do not have regular access to email, we will provide printed copies. And then mandatory harassment and discrimination prevention training, as required by state law, will be made available to employees, elected officials, and appointed officials. And then finally, what I feel is very important is the policies will be scheduled for review every August, and changes will be brought to the council as needed to ensure we don't end up where we are today. So, finally, again, staff recommends the adoption of Resolution 7-17, Establishing Personnel Rules and Regulations; Resolution 8-17, Establishing the Employer-Employee Relations; Resolution 9-17, Adopting a Policy Prohibiting Harassment, Discrimination, and Retaliation; and finally, Resolution 10-17, Adopting a Drug-Free Workplace Policy. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great staff report, Dana. Any questions from council to my right? Marlos?
You know, I did ask some questions of Dana, but she very graciously provided me with answers to them, so I'm certainly satisfied with them. I think it might be beneficial, though, for anybody paying attention and watching us tonight, for you to just publicly give the answer that I asked about marijuana, because that is included as an illegal drug in the drug-free employee policy, and I know there's an issue of people that use medical marijuana, and I just wanted to clarify exactly what might happen to an employee where a doctor actually prescribed medical marijuana and how that would be treated, so if you would just respond to that.
Right. So, yes, the marijuana is listed as an illegal drug in the policy for a few reasons. One is our commercial drivers are under DOT, and our mechanic is under FTA regulations, and as you know, marijuana is illegal at the federal level. Also, it's important to note that Proposition 64 did not include any language to preempt either a public agency or a private business from restricting the use of marijuana in the workplace. The question about medical marijuana, I can foresee that if an employee had a serious illness, that could come up during the discussion of if there could be a reasonable accommodation to continue working, but as written, it would not be allowed in the workplace.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Marlos. Thanks, Dana. John?
Thank you, Dana. I appreciate your report. I had the opportunity to review that in detail prior to the meeting and send you all of my comments, and I just want to thank you for incorporating many of those into the policies. I know that this stuff is rather onerous in terms of the volume, but also can be cumbersome at times, having to review these kinds of things, but they form an important foundation. So, I just wanted to say thank you. I have no further questions, and just, I appreciate you making the changes that I requested.
Thank you for your input.
Thanks, Matt.
Yes, I'd like to reiterate what's already been said. Wonderful report, and Dana, I bet this probably kept you up, this reading on this for some time.
Yes, it did.
Okay. I do have a couple of questions. I do have a couple of questions. One is going to be related to the Prop 64 issue, but then, most importantly perhaps, you've talked about how employees can have looked at this. In the future, knowing that we're going to be reviewing this every year, employees can access this how?
Employees will have the policies available. During that review, if any changes come up that should be discussed amongst the employee groups, we'll provide that opportunity.
And since it is voluminous in its breadth, when they need help, would they come to you in that respect?
They can come to me or to Lori Goforth in HR, and employees do all the time.
Got it. Okay. And then my Prop 64 question, understanding how it will go moving forward in terms of recreational and medicinal use, if we have employees that are not necessarily in a position where they would have to, due to federal regulations, they couldn't be using marijuana, but if we had someone who wasn't driving, who wasn't operating machinery, is how would that language of Prop 64 affect them?
If I may, as Dana said, Prop 64 didn't do anything to prohibit a city or a public or a private employer from being able to regulate the use of marijuana. And so, it doesn't matter what happened with Prop 64. The city can have a policy to keep it not to be, marijuana should not be used when they're at work. Or they shouldn't come in having just used it either.
And so, that's the distinction moving forward, not at work. And then, I guess, Joe, going forward, and that's going to be within the legal parameters of the law, what timeframe before going to work? And it's the same thing, I would suppose, with alcohol.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. That's all.
Red?
Just thank you for bringing us up to date. This is really well-written and comprehensive.
A lot of work went into it for a long period of time, so Susan Slaton played a big part of it, as well as Lori, so I appreciate being able to bring it forward, but-
Good job by everybody. Thank you.
I don't have any speaker slips for this, and I'm just going to do the scan of the audience, and don't see any hands being raised, so I'll open and close public comment and bring it back to council for final closing remarks, and I think we did. Dana, when I read through this, I kind of went through former policies and procedures from different employee reports as well, and I don't think there's any one of us from the law side that would understand, you know, all the details of this, but you know, it's, as Matt said, voluminous, and so just thanks for all the work, Lori and Susan as well. Thanks for those. Nice to recognize Susan in part of this. So, obviously, a lot of work, coordination with Joe's firm as well, and getting all this done, so great report and getting that. So, unless there's any other comments, I'll take a motion to approve.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to add my congratulations, because this is really a job well-done, and I appreciate very much all of the effort that went into it, and I was totally impressed by you have managed to cover and address every possible issue that could come up in the workplace. So, thank you. Not from me.
So, I will move that council approve the personnel rules and regulations and other related policies by adopting the following. Resolution number 07-17, rescinding resolutions number 46-74, 34-83, 127-89, 46-95, 90-98, 21-04, 58-04, and 26-05, and establishing personnel rules and regulations for full-time city employees. And Resolution number 8-17, rescinding Resolution number 7469, and establishing employer-employee relations. Resolution number 09-17, adopting a policy prohibiting harassment, discrimination, and retaliation, and Resolution number 10-17, adopting a drug-free workplace policy.
Deep breath.
That was a long motion.
And I'm going to second that.
So, we have a motion and a second. We'll give the motion, Mr. Hedy, and a second to Ms. McPherson. Thanks for that. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. Great. And so, we have five minutes. We could take a five-minute recess and come back at 7:00 for our public hearing item. How about that? Okay? Good. Thanks, AGP. Welcome back, everybody. We're now past the 7 o'clock hour. We can officially start our public hearings, which is our next item of business on the agenda. Item B1 is adoption of urgency ordinance number 610 and introduction of ordinance number 611, reauthorizing the public education and governmental PEG access channel fee. Our city attorney, Joe, do you have this?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
As you may all remember, there was a time when the city actually had total control over what was happening with cable TV, including being able to charge a franchise fee. But in 2006, the state decided to help you out. Can't hear it? The green light's on. Okay. All right. Thank you.
That's better. Thank you.
Want me to start again? So, there was a time when cities, including Morro Bay, had authority to regulate and control cable TV and the way it was used and installed and operated in Morro Bay, and then the state, in their wisdom, decided in 2006 to take that control away from the city and adopting something called the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act of 2006, DIVCA. That's how I'm going to refer to it. And what DIVCA did is it took away from the city the ability to charge a franchise fee, but it allowed the city to continue to charge a fee for the public education and government access channel, that you can then use that money for putting on governmental programs on TV, for getting video and audio equipment that you can use to show city events and city council meetings or whatnot. And so, what the DIVCA did, however, is it required that now that cable companies aren't franchised by the city, they're franchised by the state, every time a state franchise terminates and gets renewed, you have to renew the law that says a PEG fee has to be paid. So, basically, that's what this is doing. And the reason there's two ordinances is because the deadline for that current franchise agreement that's going on with the state ends in March, March 30th. So, we're going to adopt two ordinances. One, an urgency ordinance, which reaffirms that law immediately, and then, just for bensels suspenders, we'll also have the regular ordinance that'll be read at the next, second reading at the next meeting, and then it'll be effective 30 days later. So, with all that, that's the point of tonight, is for you to reauthorize the ability for the city to charge charter communication with PEG fees, and we've written the ordinance, the continuing ordinance, not the urgency ordinance, in such a way that it'll automatically renew, so we don't need to do this every 10 years, because we may all forget anyway. But then we don't have to worry about it. And one embarrassing correction I have to make, and thank you to Mr. Schmullinger and actually ADP, it's not AT&amp;T, as it states in the staff report and actually states in the ordinance, it's charter communications. So, anywhere that says AT&amp;T in here, it should say charter communications. So, when you adopt or introduce and adopt the ordinance, just have it be with the amendment that includes charter, not AT&amp;T. And with that, I'm done.
Okay. Great. With that, I don't have any public speaker slips, but I'll scan the audience, the large audience that we have, and I'm not seeing any takers. So, with that, public comment is open and officially closed, and we'll bring it back to council. I didn't open for questions or anything, but I'll start with question and discussion. I'll start towards Marlos, if you want to start with this.
I don't have any questions. It seems like it's something that we absolutely have to do, and we have to do quickly, so that's my understanding.
Yes.
The only-
Only if you want to retain your PEG fees.
Right. The only question I might have is how it came to this point, I guess, without us realizing it, but just an oversight, I expect.
We're supposed to get notice of when those, when the state is going to renew those franchise agreements, we're supposed to get notice. I'm not sure we got that notice, or if we did, it may have just got misplaced or something, so that's-
Okay. That's, yeah. No, I, pretty straightforward, it seems to me.
Okay. Any question or discussion? Any questions or discussion?
I do. I actually have a question. Marlos, you got first one of my questions, but then, Joe, looking at the amount of $28,000 to $32,000 that'll come to the city, how is this delivered to the city? Is it a one-time fee, once a year?
Every quarter.
Every quarter, so $8,000? Okay. Roughly. Okay. And then that goes into a fund that then we give to AGP, or?
It only can be used for capital costs related to PEG operation, so it can't be used for employee salaries and that kind of thing. It has to be for, you know, speakers and hardware.
So, say, for instance, AGP asks the city, hey, we need new XYZ-
Correct.
Then we could use that for the capital cost of that. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Okay. Great. Red? Nope. Well, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve-
We actually need to read-
You have to read it?
Both titles.
Okay. So, the recommendation, pardon me, I better, unless somebody has it-
I got it right here.
You got it? Go ahead, Matt.
Okay. The recommendation, council discuss and adopt after reading by title only, and with further reading waived urgency ordinance number 610, an uncodified urgency ordinance of the City of Morro Bay, California, reauthorizing the public educational and governmental PEG access channel fee, and two, introduce for first reading by title only and with further reading waived, ordinance number 611, an uncodified ordinance of the City of Morro Bay, California, reauthorizing the public educational and governmental PEG access channel fee. Second.
With the amended language of it being charter, not AT&amp;T?
So moved.
Second on the amendment.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Mr. Makawetzky, second by Mr. Hedy. We're all copacetic on that. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. Thanks. Okay. Cool. Moving on to our final item on the agenda, item C2, council guidance for fiscal year 2017-18 budget compliance. Mr. Buckingham?
I'm Craig. Craig, you going to take it? Can you hear me? Great. All right. Thank you. Craig Schmullinger with the Finance Department. And before you, as Mayor Irons introduced, we're looking for some guidance as we move into the development, or continue developing, rather, the fiscal year 1718 budget. So, that's the fiscal year that begins on July 1 of next year, so we're kind of creeping up on that timeframe a little bit. So, at the special meeting on February 28th, Mr. Bob Leland from Management Partners and Mr. Buckingham in support, provided a 10-year forecast that was updated from the last time the council heard a 10-year budget forecast. Those projections looked quite a bit different from February 26th to February 27th, raised a few eyebrows, so we're here again to take a look at that and hopefully receive some direction going forward on where to potentially implement some cuts, the nature of those cuts, and the amount needed for those cuts. And just to be clear, this is just for the general fund that we're looking at. So, the cut number identified to sustain long-term operations without dipping into the red for the general fund was $650,000. There's no surprise that that figure ties pretty closely to the CalPERS discount rate reduction and what that's going to look like a couple of years for the city's increased CalPERS contribution, so the California Public Employee Retirement System, the city's pension system, for those listening at home. Kind of looking at why we did the 10-year budget forecast, the Government Finance Officers' Association, or GFOA, provides best practices for doing things exactly like this, so we don't kind of run off the fiscal cliff. We can see things like this down the line, and we can prepare for it. And if cuts are needed, we can do it in a more strategic fashion than a draconian, you know, cut 10 positions off this side of the budget or something like that, full programs. We'll get to this in a couple of slides here, but the likelihood of revenue increases to the magnitude of $650,000 sustained, starting next year or in a couple of years, is not very likely, and we'll kind of dive into what our major revenue categories would be to hopefully get us to that point. So, the logical path to what I call the weathering the CalPERS storm, that's the big hit here, is looking at expenditure cuts. So, again, seeking directions so we can compile a fiscal year 1718 budget that's in line with council's objectives. So, here's the fund charts, and I say fund with heavy sarcasm, because it's obviously a very different picture there. So, looking on the left side of the screen there is the February 2016 10-year projection, and the blue bars that you see are the general fund emergency reserve cash balance we have on hand. So, without looking very closely, you can see, actually, the highest bar on the left chart is the fiscal year 17 general fund emergency reserve cash level. So, even in last year's projections, it was anticipated this would kind of be the height of that. Council adopted a GFOR reserve policy that actually included a little bit of deficit spending for a couple of years to kind of weather a known CalPERS increase, which we'll get to in a little bit as well, but still maintain adequate levels per GFOA standards, and actually, a little bit above that, which is good news. Unfortunately, we do have that bigger CalPERS hit, so that is kind of what you're seeing on the right there in the February 2017 chart, where instead of going down a little bit and kind of ticking back up through the out-years, it just goes straight down. So, again, we're hoping to make some course corrections in the short term, the three-to-five year term, so we maintain solvency going in the out-years. So, as mentioned, here's kind of the revenue slide and what some options would look like for some of those major revenue categories. So, property taxes, which current year with all of those property taxes kind of rolled up together, including Prop 172, public safety realignments, and things like that, so it's not just straight property tax, looking at roughly $3.9 million in revenues, just to give you an order of magnitude. And considering, or looking at the assessed value, rather, the city gets 11.8% of the 1% that the county assess on all properties. So, for every million dollars in assessed value, so thinking that it's two $500,000 houses, the city's looking at getting roughly $1,180. So, to get to that magical $650,000 in sustained increases, we would need 1,100 new homes, each valued at half a million dollars. The likelihood of that, I can see Scott smiling, not very likely. I think all of our financial forecasts, including the Bardawells, assumes 10 new housing units per year, so obviously, that's not terribly likely. Kind of switching gears and looking at sales tax, as Mr. Leland mentioned at his February 28th meeting, sales tax are declining statewide. There's a lot of purchases online now through Amazon versus going to your local record store, I think was the example used. What we get, or, excuse me, what we have budgeted for the current year is about $1.8 million in sales tax, and that's actually a tick up. There's some things going on with the state triple flip there, so that was trending at about $1.5, a little bit lower, went up to $1.8, and we had a little dip in property tax. The likelihood of getting there is not very likely. We'd have to have something in the neighborhood of 200 new storefronts, given the average storefront and the Embarcadero and what kind of sales tax figures those produce. And again, this half-cent sales tax measure produces about $1 million, and that's just looking at the Measure Q revenue. So, TOT, or the head and bed tax on all of our hotels, I think a couple of speakers mentioned this earlier tonight during public comment, that is a major revenue source for us, roughly 25% of our general fund revenues, looking at about $3.3 million for the current year in revenue. This could possibly be a long-term solution, so not probably the three-to-five-year term, but by the time a potential new hotel or hotels come online, that could probably smooth out some of the needed cuts in the out-years by providing a bump in- This could possibly be a long-term solution, so not probably the three-to-five-year term, but by the time a potential new hotel or hotels come online, that could probably smooth out some of the needed cuts in the out-years by providing a bump in revenue. So if you're not getting more revenue in the short term, you gotta look at the other side of the balance book, which is expenses, which is why we're here. Expenses, as mentioned, were largely caused by the CalPERS discount rate reduction. So when CalPERS decided to cut the discount rate, which is essentially their gain on their investment, which cuts our contributions from an assumed rate of 7.5% down to 7% over the next few years, that had a huge impact on what we're going to pay. And we'll see that in the next slide here. Expense reductions are a practical way to adjust, or to address the short-term CalPERS hit that we're seeing coming. So when we talk about a general fund cut, that could be wide open, and you're probably asking the exact same questions. Is that cutting positions by, through attrition? Are we cutting set-asides into specific accounts? Is this cutting contributions towards, you know, specific entities, things like that? The door's wide open for those kind of things. So the questions we're asking and hoping to receive direction on tonight are the amounts to be cut, confirming the amount that we need to cut going forward, the timeframe for those cuts, whether it be $650,000 next year, right out of the gate, just cut the 650, or smooth that over a two, three, four, or other year, or other timeline, and then the areas to look for some of those cuts. And we provide some examples in the staff report of those as well. So here's what CalPERS did to us, and you see the ramp-up in the cost. I think the most important chart is the one on the right over there. So if you look at the blue bars, those are the current PERS rates. That's just what we're planning to pay for all of our general fund-funded employees based on their actuarial, which is always a three-year trailing index. So what was mentioned at the 28th meeting is there were several Tier 1, so more expensive planned employees that have been retiring over the last several years. So it's a natural lag to get to those less expensive employees like myself or some others that are either Tier 2 or Tier 3. So we should see some savings in the out-years, but until more of those Tier 1s retire and in fact stop collecting benefits through one means or another, we're going to see some increased cost for that. So again, blue bars are the current PERS rates. Adding on to that, you'll see next year are the planned rate changes. So by planned rate changes, we mean increase for the unfunded accrued liability. CalPERS used to be really simple. They just had a percentage cost to us. They'd say 8% was the employer's cost, 7% or 8% or 9% was the employee cost of that. Unfortunately, their gain on investment trailed those indices quite a bit, so there's another component on top of that, the unfunded accrued liability, which is going up a lot, and you'll see that as the yellow bar on top of the blue bar for each of these years. Next, in the green, or the green portion of this bar chart are assumed wage increases. And as you'll see in a little bit, that's an assumed 2% cost of living adjustment that you would grant to an employee every year, and you'd see the incremental increases in that year-over-year. And then the big one, which starts to hit in fiscal year 19 and continues to the out-years, are the dark red and the pink changes in the discount rate. So the $650,000 we're talking about in a couple of years, you'll see where that kind of grows exponentially in the out-years as that reduction goes to 7 in fiscal year 21, 22, and then ultimately, a lot of people are thinking it might go to 6.5. All right, so the three questions we had are, is the cut needed, first of all? We're looking for a direction or confirmation of that, and the amount to be cut. So confirmation that cuts are needed to address this near-term problem, so three-to-five-year immediate problem. Confirmation that $650,000 in sustained general fund cuts are needed, and that is the correct number, not a lesser number, not a greater number like 800,000. And then alternatives, obviously, the door's kind of open on that end, but some of those would be to direct staff to cut a different amount other than $650,000 in sustained general fund cuts and/or that cuts are not needed. Second question is the timeline for the cuts. We're looking for some direction on if the council wants to see this $650,000 or other amount cut in a single year, smoothed over numerous years, or not made at all and go in a different direction on that end. So just an example of what that general fund emergency reserve looks like through some of these examples on the timeline. Your left chart over there, that is the same chart. Over there on the right, the February 2017, with the change with, or the change being $650,000 in general fund cuts all next year, one-year cut. So that's the change from a steady decline year-over-year. Sorry, I ordered these poorly. So again, chart on the left is $650,000 in general fund cuts, all taken next year, beginning July 1, and the chart to the right of that is a three-year smooth $650,000 cut. So what you will notice is, even with the three-year smooth $650,000 cut, there's still a decline in the general fund emergency reserve in the out-years. So we're still assuming some course, some little tweaking and course corrections internally to make sure we're being efficient with all of our appropriations, things like that. But it provides the major, or the larger kind of turn of the ship in the right direction. All right, and the last question is the golden one. We're assuming cuts are confirmed and an amount and a timeline, where should we start with the cuts? And the immediate need for that is through continued compilation of the fiscal year 1718 budget, which we're doing right now. So we're looking for direction on areas where the staff should cut for the current year, and if a smooth approach is directed by your council, then areas to look in the out-years. And some alternatives to that would be to direct staff to either not recommend cuts at all, or to come back for future year budgets with potential options and recommendations for some of those out-year budgets as well. So, again, being that we follow that GFOA forecasting best practice, we've got a little bit of time here. So if we can be practical in rolling out these cuts, that'll give us a little bit of time to hopefully gain some efficiencies or look at some programs or do some other non-Draconian-type Apologies for this slide. I guarantee you can't read it from where you are. Hopefully you didn't the staff report-
Thankfully, we have this. Thank you. Yeah.
So, the reason for including this is just to include all the assumptions built into the model. You should have seen this at the 28th as well. Those assumptions go untouched, but you'll notice some things in there such as a 5% assumed TOT growth rate, which is actually a little more on the conservative side, which isn't bad. I got a few conversations mentioning 5% seems a little aggressive, and if I were in the city of Carlsbad where I came from, or city of San Diego, I would agree. Here, not so much. It's a pretty safe figure in there. Some of the other assumptions built in are a 2% cost of living increase, that we mentioned the little green bars on the cost of the CalPERS, a 2% contribution or increased contribution year-over-year to employees' health banks, that CalPERS discount rate down to 7%, and we actually included an assumed rate reduction to 6.5%, which we believe is prudent. CalPERS has indicated that their long-term investment will likely yield 6.4%, and that's what they've seen. So, all signs indicate that route. And then you'll see down below, right above technology applications, some of the best practice set aside into things such as vehicle replacements, facility maintenance, capital replacement, and project accumulation. So, we have money to repair City Hall, or if there's a, the notorious bathroom that we've talked about numerous times, if that goes down, we've got money set aside to replace things like that, or if a car blows up, we got, you know, a means or a set aside in there for a planned replacement of those facilities or vehicles. So I think I've hit all of these points about 10 times already, so I'll spare you saying it for the 11th. So direction is being sought so that'll enable staff to bring forward a recommended budget in line with council expectations. And following tonight's meeting, staff will take the direction from today's item and continue compilation of the fiscal year 1718 year budget. In the coming months, a recommended budget will be brought forward to you through either a single workshop or multiple workshops for deliberations. And then supplemental direction for future year budgets will be retained for upcoming and updated budget projections for future fiscal years. And I should have a slide that says questions, or that's it? But that's it.
Okay.
Actually, if I could just-
Thanks, Craig.
One thing, it's in the staff report that wasn't, excuse me, in the presentation, but to clarify, so staff's recommendation is, is that you say, yes, cut $650,000 as the, as the sort of going-in proposition, B, that you, that you would direct us to phase that in over three years with $250,000 in this budget and then 200 in the next two budgets, and at C, you identify the capital replacement fund and the project accumulation fund as the place to go for that initial $250,000. And I'd also say that during the upcoming, so those are the three questions. How much to cut, if it's a one-year cut, two-year cut, or three-year cut, and then if it's $250,000 the first year, to where to go for that, whether to look at programs or people, or that, those two areas of savings. And then finally, during the budget process, because what we know is coming, it'd be a comment on the staff to begin to foreshadow for you a little more clearly where future cuts could be made, and we could get direction from you during the budget process of actions to begin to take this coming fiscal year in order to be prepared for additional cuts in the following fiscal year.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to open up for questions, and I'm just going to note, for the viewing audience, we have one guest with us, and I'm not sure we have public comment, but considering the item, we have no public speakers for this, for this item tonight. So we'll open up for questions and start, how about I start with Matt here? I've been going to my right, so I'll start with Matt and then Red.
Okay. Yes, Craig, I have a question for you. So I have a number of questions, but I'll start with this one. In terms of, I think it was last year or the year before, you weren't here, I understand that, but we based our GFAO amount at 27.5%, and then Dave, and we need your help here, I think the recommended amount for that for other city councils was, was it 16 or 17%? And we deliberately chose to go to a higher amount?
16 and 1/2 is the GFOA recommended standard. I would say most, most would call that a recommended minimum. That's two months of cash on hand.
Okay, so understanding that it's a minimum, looking at the budget shortfall that we have for the 650, and knowing that that is a minimum, is there any possibility, and I don't know how this would be worked, but to use part of that money in a given year that's not used? We're putting 27%, 27.5% away, recommended is 16%, but can we, I don't know, I'm just asking, is it possible to use that money at any time? So another question. Go ahead.
Would it take you one at a time, or?
Yeah.
So that's not 27 and 1/2% each year set aside, but to keep 27 and 1/2% in the bank? And so if you don't spend any of that 27 and 1/2% this year, then it's still there next year.
Okay, so, okay, but it's still there, and, but so that's, could be open, although we agreed to it in the last couple of years not to, but it's still there. Also, in terms of, I see on page 165 of this report, of this item, looking at Figure 7, you talk about alternatives to total cuts, and you use the example, 400,000 or 800,000. Looking at the timeframe, and I think you're talking over four years, are we choosing any particular timeframe, Craig? From three years to five years to four years? Looking at the prognostication, looking out, if we're looking at seven years, knowing that this rate could adjust, are we just going with a set two or three years to start the battle, or is there a rationale for that?
So, good questions, and that Figure 7 on page 165 was included just for argumentative purposes, just to show a simple example. It wasn't the recommendation that Dave mentioned. So, our recommendation is still that three-year kind of rollout period, but it should be clear that in each of these charts, regardless of whether that $650,000 is taken out in a single year or through three years, that sustains that level of spending all the way through the end of the chart there, through FY '25, you'll see on the right-hand column. So it doesn't assume just cuts for three years and then drops off, and then we will no longer need that level of cutting. Does that make sense?
Okay. Yes, totally. Because looking at the prognosis, looking ahead at this, your chart, and I forget what chart it is, in 2017 and '18, we're not, and I think 19 through '18, '19, and '20, the jump isn't necessarily going to be so great. And so will that $650,000 be sufficient to weather those first three years, or are we, where does that 600, and then in, is that going to be sufficient for those first three years, and then for the next three years, are we going to need more?
Great question. So, it depends on, if you want to stick to your council authorized and approved resolution at the minimum level that you wanted to set at the 27.5%, then no, it's not enough. It kind of gets us along that way, and it doesn't drop straight through the basement, you know, in the out-years there, but it maintains, so you can still make those kind of incremental changes and hopefully gain some efficiencies and look for areas where we can provide more efficient services in those out-years. But, for example, looking at the $650,000 in one-year cuts, you drop below your adopted, the council adopted GFER level at fiscal year '22, but that's still, you know, another four and a half, five years from now. So that's quite a few years to make some course corrections and adjustments and see how assumptions kind of play out.
Okay.
Did that answer your question at all?
Yes. And then another question. When we go to start talking about, as a council, talking about different cuts to make, I guess this is to Dave and to you, Craig, are we going to just willy-nilly go through the budget, or are you going to give us suggestions?
Sorry, could you say that once more?
In terms of asking council for suggested cuts-
Right.
Are you going to give us, are we going to look at the list and the list that you provided on item F2, I mean, Figure 2, looking at that list, or do you want us to come up with other cuts, or are you going to give us a suggested list?
What we recommend tonight is that you direct $250,000 of cuts this year, and-
For year 17.
This coming year, fiscal '18, in the current, in the coming budget, and that you direct those cuts come from two savings programs that we didn't, that weren't in existence two years ago, actually, and that is the capital replacement fund, $100,000, and the project accumulation fund, $150,000. Those are, that's where we recommend that you, you direct us to make the cuts, to develop a draft budget for your consideration in May and June with that as a starting point. And instead of directing something else sort of more substantial that would affect services now, like a reduction or an elimination of certain programs, or a reduction in labor and people.
So with that in mind, no pun intended, this will buy us time to look at, in that budget year 2018, that 250, that'll buy us that conservative safety net that we're looking for, and also answer our budgetary needs as we look for other possible cuts in the coming years.
Exactly. We put those two lines of savings into the budget two years ago to begin being fiscally responsible for the future. And so, so we can, you can either direct the cuts come from that, or, or direct the staff to identify service lines or complete programs to reduce or eliminate, and as that, use that as a starting point for this budget. And the reason we recommend pausing contribution to those two savings programs this year is that'll give all of us the opportunity as we go through the upcoming budget development process in May and June, developing the fiscal year '18 budget, to look more carefully at specific program lines and to say, hey, that's one that next year- specific program lines and to say, hey, that's one that next year, or here's 10 that we want to use in the next six months, work with the community and say, what's your priority on these 10 different programs? Because some of them are going to have to be cut. Or if we're going to reduce labor, reduce people, unless we want to actually lay somebody off on the 1st of July, because we need to start saving some of this money on the 1st of July. Unless we want to actually lay somebody off on the 1st of July, then we can use attrition over the year ahead to consider labor reductions. Voluntary attrition, retirements, movements.
Thanks, Matt. Red?
I don't have any questions.
John? Marla?
Okay. I do have some questions. I sent some questions to Craig ahead of time, and in part to look at some of the assumptions built into the model. So I actually asked for sales tax revenues over the past five years and property tax revenues and TOT, just to get a sense of how our revenues were actually changing over time. Because built into this model is a 0% sales tax increase in it. Is that correct? That's, or actually, it's a minus 5%. I have a hard time reading this, but it's actually a decline.
If I may, that negative 5% would be the effect of the assumed recession.
Recession, right.
Exactly, which I should have mentioned when we were going forward.
Right, right, right. I'm just, really, I'm just pointing out that the model is built on assumptions about revenue as well as expenses, and to the extent that some of those assumptions may not be accurate, especially moving out in time, this model isn't going to be totally predictive. That was the only reason that I asked some of those questions. And what you pointed out to me is that it was very difficult to see how our sales tax revenues have increased over time because of the triple flip and the combination with property tax. So you'd almost have to look at the two together to see how they've been increasing over time. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I think you're totally right, and I did exactly what you were talking about, and there still is that trend upwards, but you're right.
A slight trend upward. It looks like it's a slight trend, so that there will be some more revenue coming in here from those revenue sources, not 0%, but rather some slight increase.
So I was trying to pull it off, but quickly, I believe that the sales tax assumption is 3%, averages 3% increase of sales tax a year in the model every year. So that's reflected in these charts.
In the model, because this shows a minus 5%.
So that, again, that 5% is just the effects of the recession in FY '19 for a one-year, and it bumps right back up. So behind the scenes in there, there's some increases like Dave was talking about.
Behind the scenes, there's some other assumptions. Okay.
Just all that 5%, that's the severity of the one-year recession.
Okay, well, that's helpful to understand, yeah, that there are some other assumptions built in there. So another question, and I apologize, I didn't have a chance to ask this ahead of time, but how much money has already been set aside in the accumulation funds? So do you, can you tell me how much we already have in the vehicle replacement fund and the facility, I can't read it, capital, in the various accumulation funds?
Give me a couple of minutes.
Okay, all right, perfect. Then in the meantime...
I think we're going to find it's $275,000 is in the capital replacement fund, because I believe we did $150,000 the first year and $125,000 the next year.
So we've been doing it for two years?
We've done this for two years. I think it's, that might be a little bit lower than that, because we had to make some cuts right at the last minute. And then the project accumulation, it's probably $200,000 to $300,000.
But there is some money already set aside that's there.
Yes.
And this would actually just be the money we aren't going to be putting in, in the coming fiscal year.
Correct.
Yep. And then my last question, looking out the three years after we've, suddenly, this is going to hit us big time with the $650,000 additional PERS rate, PERS costs, could you tell me, and maybe, I don't know if this model will do this, but what percent of the general fund would be personnel costs at that point?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Well...
I'll give it a stab, I think it's pretty close. This year, personnel costs are 71% of the budget.
Right.
The increase in pinching costs over the next three years is about $650,000.
Right.
Which is about 5% of the budget. So we'll probably be up to 75%, 76% in three years.
In three years.
And that's not, that's, there's some, you know, it might be 74, it might be 77, because I'm not sure what other growth is anticipated or isn't in there.
Right, some healthcare costs.
But currently, it's 71, we know that.
Right.
And it's, and $650,000 increase equates to currently 5% of the general fund.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Yeah, now I can think about the reason, what's going to happen, though, in three years, the size of the general fund will be bigger. So $650,000 won't represent 5%, it might represent 4%, so it's going to be in the 75% range.
All right. I mean, but it's going to increase unless we significantly increase our, well, it will certainly still increase the cost, the expenses.
Absolutely.
Yep. Just trying to get a ballpark idea of how much, so, thank you.
Okay, great. I have a couple of questions on the project accumulation fund and the capital replacement fund, so great to have those numbers. You know, looking at, so the recommendation, take 150 out of a project accumulation, 100 out of capital, and basically, don't take it out of that, but don't put it in.
Correct.
Exactly. And that's what I was getting to, yeah. So we're not putting, we're not budgeting for that 250, so that's where, that's the $250,000 reduction. So the recommendation is there because you're comfortable with the amount we have in those two funds? In other words, when I was looking at that, I thought to myself, so if we're going to use that, why don't we maintain some active deposits into all of those funds? I mean, we could go, you know, $50,000 each through every single one of those funds and still maintain some deposits into those funds to keep them at least some sort of minimum contributions. And that's just me looking at the back of a napkin, so to speak, not knowing the numbers. So I'm looking for some feedback on why, the strategy that goes behind that.
I guess it primarily comes down to priorities and to what can you defer with, what is perhaps easiest to defer without showing a significant cost of deferring it? We don't want to be in the business of deferring, well, this is capital replacement and project accumulation. So these two things are to replace capital facilities or to, project accumulation is pretty easy, that's to build new capital facilities that we don't even have yet. The next two, above those two are vehicle accumulation and...
Facility maintenance?
Facility maintenance. Would not recommend that we reduce facility maintenance, because that's what Rob's, Matt Bishop's guys and Mike Wilcox are using to...
Keep things...
Keep the Band-Aids, so to speak, on those capital projects, pieces of capital that we need to replace someday. And similar to vehicle replacement, we are already extending the number of years that we operate vehicles to draw that out. We're not replacing vehicles every three years, so we've got lots of brand-new vehicles, but you have to have vehicles for maintenance to be able to go around and do what they do. Or for policemen to patrol, that's required. You don't have to have money in project accumulation in order to build a new capital facility.
Okay.
Can I jump in with figures?
Yeah, please.
Is this a good time?
Sure.
Excellent. So the anticipated end of fiscal year '17, so June 30th cash balance that we have for vehicle replacement, the model assumes $136,000 in there. However, we just signed $70,000 worth of a PO for two new vehicles in our facility group, or in our consulted maintenance, excuse me. So that number can be assumed to be dropped down to $66,000. Facility maintenance, as Dave mentioned, that's kind of their spending account to actually get things done, that's down quite a bit less, we're assuming only $16,000 in end-of-year cash in there, not much. Capital replacement, on the other hand, has an assumed cash balance of $200,000 at the end of the year. And then, as Dave mentioned, I'm impressed by his memory, project accumulation, we're looking at about $260,000 at the end of the year. Hope those help.
Yeah, okay, thanks. And then, Craig, thanks for meeting today, kind of playing with some of the numbers. We got to play with the model a little bit, and one of my concerns, because, you know, we're working on assumptions, we're doing our best to, it's our best guess, but it's still uncertain on the healthcare cost. So we're, in the assumptions, we're looking at healthcare contribution at a 2% increase. And, you know, is that the best-case conservative? Or is it 2.5 or 3.0? Because, you know, I'm not asking that we're going to anticipate everything, but indications are that healthcare costs aren't going to be flat, and is 2% a conservative enough estimate? Is the question.
Well, that's a good point. Obviously, with, when you forecast, it's built on assumptions. We just do our best to make sure those assumptions are validated to the extent we can. That 2% would be a running trail index of what the city has traditionally increased their contribution for those healthcare costs. So even if healthcare goes up quite a bit, probably wouldn't advocate for this, but if the city chose not to chip in an additional amount to that employee's cost for healthcare, that could certainly be built in as an assumption as well, or the exact opposite, where the city pays 100% and it costs us way more. But this is just kind of a running trend of what the city has increased, is roughly 2%.
So in other words, if the healthcare costs come up, we can stick with that assumption, excuse me, stick with the assumption of 2%? And if it does go up, then we would have to negotiate that the employees would be picking up the addition of that? Is that, is that what you're saying?
I'm looking at the running trend of what the city has historically done, but that could be on the table for discussion or negotiation going forward, certainly.
Okay. I think those are all my questions for right now, and like I say, we don't have any public comment for that, so officially, we can open and close public comment. We have no speaker slips and no folks for that, so we'll bring it back for discussion, and I'll shift to my right. And, you know, John, do you want to start off in discussion points?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you. I wanted to just note that the staff has been recognized proactively for doing a 10-year strategic look at our financial situation for the last couple of years. And I believe that, for us, sets us apart from a number of cities, many cities, most cities, that have not done this. And so knowing and beginning to see the picture of where we might be in the future, I think, is very helpful, and I wanted to recognize staff for that and for the forethought in terms of management acumen to really look at the future that far out. And, you know, I look back at 2013, there was a study done by the Policy Center, California Policy Center, and this came as a result of the Stockton and San Bernardino failures of those cities. They basically went bankrupt. They looked at the attributes for that, and they had a rating system that was well-designed and well-understood and accepted on the basis of the numbers and the predictability that was used in that model. And the bottom line of that was that, at that time, in 2013, Morro Bay was in the lower 20% of cities, or you might say, in the top 20% of cities, most likely to possibly fail in the future. And I only bring that up in saying that, overall, in my mind, we have an extremely significant issue. There's a $4 million gap that has been recognized for a long time. We haven't been able to really adequately address our streets. That gap is somewhere about a million and a half, depending upon the way you look at that. Regular facilities, there's a $1 million gap, half million in basic capital improvements, and a half million in personnel salary wages and CalPERS. If you look at the numbers, depending upon however you want to think about the assumptions, in essence, the mayor asked about healthcare costs. Well, actually, the numbers are rising at about an 8.1% compounded rate per annum here. That's significant. The percent of Morro Bay total expenditures, based upon the CalPERS issue alone in 2017, was 8%. And according to the model, anyway, in 2025, that will rise to 18%, or the gap is about $7 million just due to CalPERS. Those are absolute real dollars, based upon a discount rate of 6.5%. It's a huge gap, just for that. Sales tax, I believe, will continue to decline. If you look at the HDL data and you analyze the sectors, the decline is primarily due to the fact that we have a lower spend rate, based upon the fact that folks with disposable income that come here are not in a high disposable income category. Property taxes have little contribution to the general fund dollars. TOT is the most significant, and we realize that, and probably the best opportunity for increasing revenues in the future, but occupancy is flat, you know, at about 62%, which has been mentioned. All in all, I think we've started down the line of trying to get to a fiscally more sound place, and that is to create a capital fund that isn't adequate to fully replace capital, and a project accumulation fund that will assist us in replacing some minimal things like IT. There are no dollars set aside for IT improvements. Point of that is, is that personally, I wouldn't touch those funds. I would continue to budget for those funds to be accumulated at the rate that we're currently looking at. I would also not touch the current 27.5 GFER policy statement, because I do not think we should decrease that at present, because that will just contribute to the issue. The bottom line for me is that, you know, this calls for dramatic action, I believe. I believe that, and I've got four points to answer your question, and they're these, maybe five. One, we have to assume in the future, zero general fund transfers to any of the enterprise funds. Now, that's happened way back in the past, I understand, but I think we have to agree on that assumption, that we can't transfer any general fund money to any of the enterprise funds, they have to stand on their own. Second, we need an aggressive cost-reduction plan across the board that will produce, I believe, should produce a million dollars a year in savings, including cost reduction and aggressive revenue enhancement, which we know, in the short term, is very, very difficult. Third, short-term revenue opportunities are not significant, and I believe we need outside help to identify what we may be missing in terms of opportunities for either fees, UUTs, or other types of revenues from those in the know, and I would leave it up to staff to make a recommendation for what, I hate to use the word consultant, but assistants we might find out there to help us with that. word consultant, but assistants we might find out there to help us with that. Number four, I believe the community needs to see this, and they must lower their expectations. I mean, that's a known fact. This is a very, very tenuous place to be, and if we don't act now and significantly contain costs and look for new revenues, we're not going to be able to maintain the safety net that the community desires and wants, talking about police and fire. And I do believe, lastly, that we should develop an emergency response plan that would allow the council via a policy to implement if there was a fiscal emergency. And that might be, you know, 10 things that happen, like a hiring freeze or a non-replacement of positions, et cetera. But I think that we should design or develop that emergency response plan and have that available. All in all, I would not touch any of the funds that you have identified. My goal would be a million dollars a year, not across the board, but I think every department needs to look and dig deeply. For me to come and tell you operationally what would be cut is not the right thing to do, I don't know. I would just generally say you need to look at everything, every single opportunity. And lastly, no matter what you do with the assumptions on the study that was presented, we are behind significantly. And we have had a plan to catch up, and now is not the time to abandon that plan. So, thanks.
Thanks, John, Marlese.
Okay. Well, let me first just respond to your questions, and then I do have some comments, and I agree with some things that John said and disagree with some others. So let me just start by answering the questions that you posed to us. Confirm that we need to make a $650,000 budget cut to the general fund in the next three years, because we know that that's coming, that's going to be hitting us at that time, that we're going to have an additional $650,000 expense. I would agree with that. I think that that is a reasonable recommendation to say that we need to cut the budget by at least that much in three years. I would support your recommendation to do it over three years. I think it's reasonable to start with a $250,000 cut in next year's budget. As to where the cuts should come from, you know, it's interesting. You could develop a budget that you simply don't put money into these accumulation funds, but I would think I would approach it differently. I think I would agree with John there, that you could maintain that contribution. But I would suggest that we have 10 months until the six-month budget review, and that we could, in fact, at that point in time, see where we stand fiscally, to see if we still need additional monies, and then we could make that transfer from those accumulation funds into the general fund. Because I think, first of all, I want to say that I think the whole council recognizes that fiscal and economic sustainability has to be our number-one goal. It's an essential goal, and we know we have to work on it. So we need to start working right away on the goal of raising revenues, but also finding places to cut expenditures. And I would support the kind of actions that Mr. Heading is suggesting. We need to look everywhere at our city budget to where we can cut, where we might have some excess staff. And we had interviews for the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee this afternoon, and one suggestion was that we start with a zero-based budget and start from scratch. What do we really need here? So instead of just taking what we have and adding 2% here or whatever percent there, let's really look clearly at the staffing that we have and what the job responsibilities are. And we do need to think about things like not replacing people when they end their employment with us. We have to look at all options, I think, for cutting, but also for raising revenues. And I think with respect to raising revenues, we need to start right away, and we need to look at the ones that are going to bring us some money as quickly as possible. So I would even move up the idea of our looking at in detail something like the rebate plan for hotels, if they're willing to invest some money in renovation. Why wait? I mean, that's something, we need to be focused on what we can do immediately. And so many of the things that are going to raise revenues for us are often the future, that we really do have to look at the ones that are here today. So I would do both, and I would start now, focusing on those things, but looking carefully when you're budgeting at what we absolutely need, and I'm talking about needs, and not any new discretionary funding, and looking for ways that we could possibly save money. And at the six-month point, that's 10 months off, we could look at where we're at, see how much money we've raised, and at that point, we could decide whether or not we need to transfer money from these accumulation funds to supplant the general fund. So that's my comments.
Thanks, Marlese. Matt?
Sure. My initial reaction, although I think I could find a happy medium with Marlese, is I agree with using the accumulation funds right off the bat. I think that's the proactivity of doing that, using that 250. We're not going to be zeroing out those funds, and that money can be used to, no pun intended, buy us time. So either way, I think I, one way, or I could go with what you're suggesting, Marlese, wait that 10 months, although I like to get out in front of it and have that money there. And then, using that money now, we can be very active in terms, if we were going to look at revenue enhancement and/or cuts across the board. So John and Marlese, I see, I mean, there's some happy ground mediums that I think we can meet up on. But, so I agree with a lot of what you're saying. My only thing that I like using, getting out front with that 250,000, planning ahead for those three years of $650,000 cuts. That's it.
Okay. So Matt, you would agree with the $650,000 recommendation?
I would agree with the $650,000 over three years, initially starting now with the 250,000 from the accumulation funds to be used in this coming fiscal, in this coming fiscal year. And then in that time, although I would agree with the 650 over the next three years, I would say, within that timeframe, we're still going to be looking for the different cuts and revenue enhancement.
Okay, great. Red?
I also support all three staff recommendations, the $650,000 and phasing it in over three years, and taking it out of our project accumulation and capital replacement. And I understand how easy it is to ask staff to go through the whole budget and look for a million dollars in cuts, but I don't think that it's fair for us to put that levy back on staff. Staff has come to the council and asked for direction and made what they think are reasonable recommendations, and I agree that those are reasonable. You know, looking for a million dollars in cuts in a $14 million general fund that is 70% made up of personnel, I just don't see how that's possible, and I don't think it's fair to ask staff to do that. I think what is urgent and critical for our economic survival as a city is to increase our revenue. And we need to do that as quickly as possible. We need to bring back goal number one and come to an agreement on what steps we're going to take to increase revenue. And we need to bring back the R F Q for the market plaza. We know that that's the low-hanging fruit. That's the quickest way we're going to increase revenue. I'd like to see that brought back very quickly. The zero-based budget, you know, it sounds good. I would like to be convinced that that is a useful tool. I don't think we are ready to jump into it for FY '18. If Mr. Buckingham can do some research on zero-based budgeting and bring back to us what the professional opinion of that is now, after it's been, when was it introduced? Jimmy Carter's administration? I think he's tried that with the federal government. But I don't think we're ready to do that now. I think starting with staff recommendation right now is the correct course of action for us to take, and that's what I'll support.
Thanks, Red. I'll start off, some of my comments, before I respond to staff recommendation, in, you know, thinking through a number of different things career-wise, being in a situation where going through cuts, going through tough times, understanding how are we going to increase revenues, where are we going to make cuts, employee layoffs, experience that, why were, why was it suggested that we did, you know, made cuts in one area versus another? So those are, to me, real-life experiences that I think about. And we're, as a council, in that situation, both, but not from the private sector side, but from a community standpoint, where it's both from the community's best interests and we have our employees that is part of that. So I just have to preface that, because, you know, I think about being in the private sector entity, experience the cuts, the layoffs, the uncertainty of what the economy was going through. So now, the city's going through that with this purse obligation, and, you know, thankfully, I would say, we did, we have started with this budgeting tool, forecasting tool, to help us with that. So that's a good thing. The areas, so now, to get to, basically, the forecasting tool and what the recommendations are and recognizing what we're up against, I would agree with and confirm on the $650,000 as the target point and what we want to get to. I would support the three-year timeline. I would say, though, that I think it absolutely is fair to ask the city how tight we can go. Instead of just saying, hey, let's just make the easy cuts, 150 and 100, we're good to go. Not but a couple of budgets ago, as I recall, Mr. Buckingham, you were asking, you know, each department to look very tightly at each one of the budgets so we could make some investment funds. And we did that, and we tightened our belts. We said, okay, we're, you know, we were able to get a little bit more out of tightened our belts from each budget, and we took that and we invested that. And we also invested that in an economic development strategic plan, which we haven't seen yet. And so when we're talking about goal number one and looking for immediate revenues, let's not forget, we invested in a five-year strategic economic development plan, and I think that's instrumental in the decision-making process. And, you know, I think that should be part of what we're looking at. You know, we invested in it. There's oftentimes, and I think all of us have probably heard from our constituents saying, why are we doing those studies if we're not going to use them? Right? So I would advocate that we have that back and we utilize that. But I think the outlying years of 1819 and 1920 and that, you know, we need to explore some cost cuts that were, that could be more significant. And, you know, I don't think I need to get into those details right now, but there's, you know, looking at the tool that we have, and when I say the tool that we have before us, that's the budgeting tool where you can actually play around with the assumptions. And by plugging those numbers in, you can have an idea of how we can, I will say, thoughtfully go about it as best we can. And that's a tough one to do, because, as we say thoughtfully, we're, I feel as though we have to consider the livelihood of our employees, and we have to, obviously, our community, our constituents, that are looking for the vital services to run and manage our city. So I think it's, to me, it's really important to convey that message and how we're doing that. So I would reinforce the $650,000 three-year timeline, as well as what I've heard from the rest of council. But I, the 150 and the 100 cut, I think, you know, if we're looking to accelerate revenues, we should be looking at accelerating what we can do for cuts and whatever those are. So if that means we need to start looking at what we're looking at for bare minimum in, from our departments, that would be my suggestion. And I know those are hard things, because whether it's Bob Leland talking about your, our finance department being very lean and how we're, you know, getting through our day-to-day business, you know, I'm going to recognize that, because I think as a city, we are lean, and I don't take that lightly. I would say to the employees, on my experiences with the community, I will echo that to the community, to remind them how lean we operate and how much we do with the employees and what we do. So, and we need to understand those things. So that's my message and comments on where we are with this. But that brings us to consensus. What I believe we have is $650,000 is the confirmed target, which is the initial ask in the recommendation. I believe we have consensus on the three-year timeline, and I just, you know, I think we've got that, and I know we've had differing opinions on that, but we'll get through those discussions. And there's kind of discussions on whether it's the 150, the whole 250 are out of the project accumulation and the capital replacement funds. And I feel as though we should be able to, if we can make deeper cuts, if we want to target 250 out of those two funds, and we can target deeper cuts now through each department, then that's one closer step that we need to get to in FY '18 and '19. Those are my comments. I think we're pretty close in some of the areas, and we have time, folks. So I think we should have the conversations and circle around what we want to do. So I'm going to look to my left and my right and to see who's waving their hand. Red, make comments?
Yeah, I just would add one thing, Jamie, that we have not directly addressed, is that part of, the second part of recommendation number three, we're taking 150 out of, and 100 out of the two funds, is direct staff to explore proposals for addressing year two and three cuts of 200,000 each. And I think that's the direction where we're heading, heading with Mr. Heading. So I don't want to lose sight of that.
Okay. Matt?
I'm just going to work this way, sorry, John. I'm just going to work on the opposite direction. Totally in agreement. I think if we're, it sounds to me like we're getting close to a consensus in terms of the three-year span. And I agree with you also, with everybody who's talked about cuts. And I don't think any departmental-level person, looking at this citywide, all of us, from the staff to the council, they understand this. So I think Red's pointed out very good, well, that words, those, the words are already in there, thinking about cuts. So I'd like to start off with that 250, and then in the next two years, cuts, and then perhaps additional monies from the accumulation fund in those years. perhaps additional monies from the accumulation fund in those years.
So, just because I'm taking notes, and I just want to make sure, and maybe we can get help from our staff as well. So we're still, we're confirmed on the 650, we're confirmed, at least to this point, on the three-year timeline, and that you were saying, so the 250, but your addition to that comment was?
The addition was in fiscal year 19 and then 20, being the second and third year of this third-year span, that, and I don't know what the percentage of cuts would be. If we were going to take 200 and 200 out of those successive years, do you ask for $50,000 of cuts each year or 50,000 and then 75,000? So I would be willing to talk through different amount of cuts for those next two years. But I think we would also need money from those accumulation funds, so we don't make those cuts so drastic and hard to bear.
Okay. John?
Thank you. With all due respect to my peers, my sense is you have your head in the sand. And I say that not tug-and-cheek, but I have, you know, I've played with the model, and you can attack a number of different variables, and you can move chessboard players on the chessboard. But at the end of the day, if you look at the overarching issue, this community does not have the scale to support the ongoing expenses and revenue needs of the future without dramatically making change now. I'm without, well, at the risk of repeating myself again, we've not ever had a capital budget. If the bathrooms break, we have to find the money somewhere because nothing's put aside. If the Highway 41 interchange needs dollars from a project accumulation fund and we don't have it, we suddenly have to do something draconian to try to find the money to make those kinds of issues happen. And that's, I don't support at all rating the capital replacement fund or the project accumulation fund. Secondarily, I could adjust my number down to 650K, but I think beginning next fiscal year, there needs to be an expense reduction of $650,000 each year from here on out, and that the plan should address that. That doesn't even get us back to where we need to be. And, you know, I've really spent a lot of time looking at our three revenue sources. I just need to tell you that sales tax, whether we believe it or not, the trends nationally, even globally, are away from big-box stores, even mom-and-pop shops, to the internet. And we lose in that ballgame. And so it, and I've talked to a number of businesses in the community that see sales declining, and that translates to a decrease in sales tax revenues. The other thing is that, you know, TOT is the biggest contributor to our general fund, and our occupancy is flat. Even if we built a hotel or said tomorrow we're going to build a hotel, that was, you know, of the range that Mr. Buckingham has been talking about in the $400 per night or $300 per night range, it would still not be enough to answer the questions that are being demanded for capital needs, for future viability of the city, for personnel increases, for health care costs. I just gave you a figure, 8.1% compounded growth per year in this city in terms of costs for health care. So we either transition that dramatically to employees, or we bear the cost of that out of the general fund. And so, you know, I could go on and on, and I don't want to be repetitive. That's really not my goal. My sense is, I'm just going to stand, we need to be more aggressive. I don't want to rate any capital funds whatsoever. I do believe we should start beginning with the next fiscal year. I do not think there are short-term revenue opportunities that will give us any fruit that is significant enough to help in the next year or two. And nobody's mentioned the recession that is coming. The recession will be here in a year or two. We keep hearing about it, and we've not even talked about accounting for that. And that's a huge issue. If we have a recession in 2019, we're going to be looking at draconian cuts in this city. So, you know, and I don't mean to be disrespectful to anybody, it's just, it's my opinion. Mr. Davis, I disagree that we should operationally try to tell staff what to do. I believe they're in the best position to know where to look for dollars across the board. I believe we set policy, and what I'm attempting to do are just that, give policy statements that I think send us in a direction that at least gets us on track for, I won't even say financial viability, but improved financial status. Study Stockton, study Vallejo, study San Bernardino, look at the 2013 California Policy Center study, where we were then. Look at the comparative data to the communities in our county. We're at the bottom. And so I stand.
Thanks, John. Marla?
Yeah. Well, as I said earlier, I'm with the 650, I'm with the three-year, and I also would not rate the funds, the accumulation funds. I agree with John there that we need to look for cuts elsewhere because these are real cuts, and we don't have enough in those funds yet to take care of any emergencies that may arise. And so I honestly think we need to look carefully at the budget to look for the savings elsewhere in the budget. And, you know, especially long-term, in years, the subsequent years, we really do need to look at the model and see what happens if we try, let's say we have to freeze employee salaries, let's see what that looks like. Let's try different variables and see what happens if we try different approaches. But initially, I would say we have some time here. While we are working on revenue generation, we need to also be looking at cost reduction. And so I would aggressively look at that simultaneously. And I do want to just say, the idea wasn't really necessarily to use zero-based budgeting, but to use that sort of philosophy of starting with looking at what we really need. And instead of just saying, well, this is what we have, let's just add 2% for inflation or whatever. It's just a way of looking at individual contracts, at the way you do things, at staffing patterns, at what people do to see if there's any more efficient way of providing services, or if you can save costs in some way. And so that was what I was suggesting with that, not that we needed to go to zero-based budgeting, so.
Okay, so we've repeated, reiterated all the things, and we're pretty much where we were when we started. And realistically, John, you know, I appreciate your position. I appreciate the firm outlook and the concern over where we're going in regards to the capital. And since we do have time, I think, and I think it's good that we do, because we really do need to get through this. You know, in regards to the capital fund and the project accumulation fund, so trying to, not that I'm going to allow the parallels to cloud my thinking on this, but when I do think of the periods of time when, in the private sector, where we were going through those financially difficult times, and they had to make choices on cutting employees and making some significant cuts to the budget, that capital fund and that project accumulation fund was one of them. And we made things work on a shoestring. That's a different era, you know, that was a different application. We're going to have to be making, you know, all kinds of different choices if we, if in the outlined three years, we don't see some sort of revenue growth. I think we'll all agree with that. But with the initial, with this initial plan, I think the 650, we agree, is a good target. I have the same concerns, John, that you have, on whether or not the 650 is going to grow. And, you know, and that's, that's part of the animal, I suppose. We actually saw that when we used the budgeting tool a year ago, and we were looking at, hey, here's our projections. We didn't have the projection of the PERS change. So I think to wrap this up and kind of see if we can get the guidance that we will agree on, and I think we can, we will get there, it may not be 100%, but I think we'll get there. The three-year timeline, I think we're there, the 650, the three-year timeline, it's just how we get there with that. The capital fund and the project fund, I understand why we're going there, but I guess my question earlier on when I was leading into that is that we should be looking deeper in this fiscal year budget beyond just the 150 and the 250. I mean, you know, it shouldn't be just an easy grab of those two funds. So if the agreement with council, if we work out that, I believe we should be able to go a little bit deeper in the cuts with whatever we can find within the organization, different organizations with the city. It's not ideal to me to be going into the capital fund and project fund, especially after establishing one for so long. Truly, you know, we do have some balance in there, which, that's good, but that balance isn't going to last as we go through it. So I'm going to look to Dave as far as where we're at, and talking about the, hitting all of these recommendations and making sure that we can get at least, you know, good agreement on the majority of them. I think we're there on number one. Number two, I think we probably have a consensus on the three-year timeline. The 250, 202, I think we're there on the 250. But the 1819 and the 1920 200 cuts, I think I just want to understand where everybody is on that. I'm not sure. So basically on that, we're, it's, what are we going to come up with in 1819 and 1920? That's open-ended. It's basically, hey, come back to us based on this conversation on where the 200 is because it's not necessarily, are we going to, because we've made 250 out of the, right now, we're saying out of the capital fund, the project fund, but we have to sustain that 250 next year and the next year and the next year. Now we've got to find 200 the next year and then 200 the next year. So we've got a point and a direction to say where we're going to find those, that 200 in those outlined years. And I think anything, so we have to understand what, you know, hiring freeze policy looks like. We have to understand, you know, I think the emergency response plan for fiscal emergency, I think that's an interesting concept. I mean, if we get hit with something else, are we going to say, okay, now we have to have a meeting now and talk about what we're going to do? Or are we going to already start looking at what fiscal emergency plan might look like? And if we're going to look at that, what would we target? In other words, what amount do we, you know, we're making assumptions. Would it be, you know, a million-dollar deficit spending that we would need in a year's time? So I think those are good discussion points and things that we should, and it's been brought up now, I don't think we should be ignoring that. I think it's, you know, plan for the worst and hope for the best. So I'm trying to bring all this together. So, Dave?
Sure, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Great discussion. So I'll just sort of review a couple of things here. I think you have a pretty good tally of where the five of you are right now. I think there's probably a three-person consensus that you could find. One thing, maybe what I could do is start to alleviate some of the existing concerns. What was pointed out a couple of minutes ago, that we fully intend to bring to you during the budget process, not only a foreshadowing of where those additional $200,000 the following year and the following year could be, but if you want to start taking bites at an apple this year, you can do that. Or if you want to take a bite at one of those apples and not cut from the capital replacement or the project accumulation, you can do that, too. The reason we asked for this item at this meeting is we're 14 days behind building the budget right now. So we've sort of got a timeline because the city needs to have an approved budget before the next fiscal year starts. On the 24th of March, all these department heads are supposed to provide their draft budget for next year to the finance director. So that's why we're looking for some general guidance so we could start to build a budget that would generally fit with what a majority of the council was thinking. One or two of you alluded to that we've gone through a, well, we've gone through a pretty significant belt-tightening exercise over the last couple of years. And in fact, and so I said belt-tightening, not draconian cutting or significant cutting, but the reason that we have $250,000 in capital replacement and project accumulation and an extra, and we increased our street spending this year by 13%, those increases came from belt-tightening in other areas. So the budgets that we created over the last two years, we put those numbers into the budget and then told these folks, okay, start cutting stuff so we can keep that in there. So frankly, most of the easy cuts have been made. And actually, if you look, if, you know, I'll go through in a second, but so the two areas that are really left, well, I guess if you think about the areas that could be cut in a budget, one is those savings kind of things, capital replacement, project accumulation. That's the low-hanging fruit, that's the easy thing to do, although it has long-term ramifications. Maybe before that is percent cuts. Everybody take a 2% cut, everybody take a 3% cut, sort of slummy slice-cutting. And in my estimation, most of that's been done. There is not a whole lot less copier paper that we can do without, or some of those things that are percent cuts. Then you really have two things left, except for cost of living increases. Really have two things left, you have programs and you have people. And that's where, in my estimation, we're going to have to go in the out years. And I'm leaving revenue off the table. I'm hopeful that we take revenue improvement actions. But even if we had a TOT incentive program in place today and somebody said, signs up for it and starts working, we're not going to see the results of those revenues this fiscal year. Because if somebody came to Scott and said, I just bought the breakers and I want to remodel it this way using the TOT investment program, it's not, there's nobody going to be staying in those new rooms during fiscal year 18. So the one, maybe the one exception to that is, that's on goal number one, one of the objectives is to increase shoulder and off-season tourism. And we want to do that, we're sort of getting into the heated season right now, but yes, this coming fall, this coming winter, and next spring, that will affect this year. But most of those other things are in the out years, like maybe in 19, but more so in '20 or '21, most of those revenue things. So the two areas that we can really look at for significant cuts are personnel, labor costs, and programs. And this is just a, this is an interlude. And this is just a, this is an interlude, but it's a, it's a foreshadowing, I guess, of the discussion that we'll have in the budget process, that you can be considering this and, and, and talking about it. So if you consider the city staff, and, and budget cuts, personnel reductions, first you can take all the water sewer, wastewater treatment, and harbor folks out, because they're all in enterprise fund. If you look in City Hall, there's one person in HR, one person in IT, one person in risk management, one clerk. And, and then as somebody alluded to, the finance department is already lean, was identified in the management partners' report as being lean. Then you get over into community development, and really their staffing is based on their workload, and people pay for it. And so if you cut community development staffing, then that slows down projects. And it's not like they're, they're thorough, they're robustly staffed right now with, with one associate planner and one contract planner, essentially, and then Cindy and Scott. So then there's three areas really left. One is the maintenance area of Public Works. There's 11, 11 folks in maintenance, and they're the folks that are picking up trash on the weekends, and cleaning bathrooms, and doing those things. And then there's, and so those, there are, we could cut there, hopefully by attrition. Police Department, Police Department has 20 personnel. A program cut could be saying, we're no longer going to have three officers on the day shift, but we're going to go to two. We have two officers at night, so we can cut, so we could, we could go to a two-person day shift and a two-person night shift, and that would be a, that would be a sort of a program line cut. And then there's the fire department, 13 people. And, and we could make a fairly significant policy change, and that is only be able to roll one fire truck at a time instead of two. Right now, we're staffed to have two fire trucks able to, fire apparatus able to respond. So another, that's sort of a personnel slash program cut. So that's personnel. On the program side, I asked the, asked the staff to, in case we got to this sort of discussion, to foreshadow a little bit, what are some of the program cuts that we can look at? And, and so there's $100,000 in the base budget each year for, that's in Scott's department for, for planning. And that is for significant planning elements. This year, it went to the zoning code update. Last year, it went to the downtown waterfront strategic plan. Next year, we've sort of guided earmarked to the master plan for the 26-acre wastewater treatment plant site. And some of those things, if you don't do, then you're not going to be able to be ready to revitalize that site to improve our revenues in the out-years. But there's $100,000 there. Another program, significant program line is the teen center. We can eliminate the teen center, that's $95,000. Eliminating the general fund contribution to tourism, if we eliminated that, that contribution this year, that's $120,000. That relates directly to improving shoulder season and off-season visitation, but those are some of the, the challenges and priorities we'll have to think through. Eliminate code enforcement, $70,000 and change. Eliminate the auxiliary firefighter program, $65,000. Eliminate pothole patching from the general fund, $45,000. At that point, you could say that some of those people aren't required either. But, and then, so the list goes on. All of those so far add up to about $450,000, just for perspective. And then the one I didn't mention is, is the whole streets program. That's Measure Q dollars, but Measure Q is also for public safety, so we could significantly reduce our street paving program, say, by $250,000, and, instead of a half million dollars. And, and then use that $250,000 to pay for general fund public safety items. So that's, I just provide that as a foreshadowing of the conversation that we'll get to have as we go through the budget process, and we'll make sure as we lay out the budget that we've identified each of these programs. And, and then we can also talk about, about some of those, those areas of labor that was not necessarily intended to make this decision really easy, but to, to show that we're already starting to think and are ready to engage in what some of those substantial programmatic or staffing cuts might look like, so that, so that we can make a recommendation deal. And I guess a follow-in, based on that, that's why we recommend that we start now with the $250,000 from the capital replacement and the project accumulation as, as a starting point for building this coming budget. And then, as I said, as we go through this budget process, if we say, if you say, let's eliminate the teen center and keep 100, or keep $95,000 in capital replacement, we can do that as we go through, and we'll make sure that we lay out those programs and some of those personnel reductions.
Matt, you had a question?
Yeah. John had made a point when we talked about, in terms of recession, and looking at management partners' plan, the 10-year plan, and looking at the possibility, in terms of the 10-year plan, we do, are looking at 2019 as a 5% reduction from, in terms of revenues from a recession. Is that about right?
Yes, the way that's built in, that minus point, minus 5% is a, is a measure of the severity of the programmed recession. And what that essentially does in the, behind the model is it reduces sales tax, property tax, and TOT, all together, and other revenue sources, all by essentially 5% for that year. And then in the following years, they start catching back up.
Okay, and with that in mind, in terms of that reduction for that year after that recession, if it does happen that year or the next year, understanding the plan, the $650,000 over the three years, is that just separate from the revenue reduction of a recession?
Yeah, the 650 is, is planned expenses that we don't expend on. So those are, those are things that are currently in the budget to, to pay for, has nothing to do with, on the, with a reduction on the revenue side.
No, I just wanted to make sure that, because I'd read before and paid attention to the management partners, that they had accounted for that. So that's my point.
And make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead, John. If you look at page three on the presentation that Craig gave us, bottom-right graph, my figure came from only the CalPERS impact, which I believe is understated, and I will say that again, is understated. If you go from 2018 to 2025, and you add up the CalPERS impact over that eight-year period, it is roughly $7 million in increased costs total over that period of time due to CalPERS. 2018, it's, it goes from $1,005,000, it goes up about, about $250,000. So I'm looking at cumulative costs. Am I incorrect in that assumption? If you just add the CalPERS impact, all the colors above the blue, for each year, roughly $7 million, it's probably 6-point-something. Page three, right, bottom right. So, so that's over eight years, $7 million, 6.9, whatever, in increased costs just for CalPERS. No capital budget, no recession, no personnel increased costs for wages, no healthcare costs increased, et cetera. Just look at that. How can you do that with rating the small amount that we have set aside in the capital budget, and not dramatically going after cost reduction? I heard what Mr. Buckingham just said, and I know it's about digging deep. What I'm saying is, is that I don't know how you get there without aggressively attacking it now. And, and that's just a simple jump, jump-off point for me.
Can I just clarify, just looking at the chart? This doesn't, those colored bars above the blue don't represent accumulating increased cost each year. They, they represent the total accumulation each year. So the, if you looked at 2025, where the blue bar stops is, or look at today, the blue bar is at 1.5 million. In 2025, our CalPERS costs, if the discount rate drops to 6%, will be 3 million. So it'll be a $1.5 million hit to the general fund between now and 2025.
But basically, in 2018, the planned rate change shows an increased cost from $1,005,000 to $1,007,500.
Correct.
So that's 250K, right? The next year, it's 250K for that year, plus that little red and green bar, which is another, well, I don't know how you draw the line, but 300K for that year, whatever it is. I, I didn't do the line across. My point is, just, just looking at that, in 2025, then, yes, it is 1.5 million to 3, it's a $1.6 million increased added cost. All I'm just saying is, if you add it up over eight years, it totals almost $7 million.
Yes, but I think an important point here is going back to the, the former, the February 2016 model. So those first graphs we looked at, if I can get there. Oh, there we go. So the one on the left, that's the good-looking chart with the GFR, assumes these yellow increases as well. So that incremental, all those yellow bars were assumed in here, and that's kind of the dip in the GFR, and then we kind of trail back up as revenues kind of catch up a little bit incrementally down the line. So if you're going to do that kind of analysis, you'd be looking more at just the, the green and the red, and then the potentially assumed pink lines as well. So not quite the 7.1, but it would be reduced.
So you get four somewhere?
Could be roughly. So I did the, the quick math. So for FY '18 through '25, which gives you eight full years, if you did a $650,000 cut sustained over that time, you get 5.2 million. So that's probably where you see your line trending, about there.
And that's cool. That's, that's great. 5.2 versus 7, that's, you know, I guess my point is, I've already stated, I just think the discount rates could even be lower. I mean, I look at macro indicators all the time, you know, and from what I see and what I hear, the CalPERS rate assumption here is probably going to be even worse, based upon at least what I see. So 5 million, 7 million.
It's a lot of money.
And it doesn't include every other expense increase that I just kind of outlined, and the issues with revenue reduction that, that I outlined, sales tax revenue, et cetera. I think you said it at the meeting, if you look at the HDL data, we've got, I mean, look at, look at San Luis Obispo, I think we're going to experience the same thing with the, with a relative rate of decline. We're not going to see the relative rate of increase that we expected in the past. I firmly believe that. And so that was my point. Thanks.
I won't, I won't haggle over $2 million.
Right, right. Can I?
I would.
I will, show me $2 million.
Yeah.
Find me $2 million positive, I'll take it.
Can I make a, a suggestion that we try to perhaps reach a compromise, and say that we will put, take some of the money out of the accumulation funds, but we will also take some of the money out of, hopefully you can find some cost savings from your departments? Oh, I can, I could make a motion.
Dave?
Go ahead, go ahead, Red.
Dave, did give us a list of possible cut reductions, maybe we could choose one.
I, I wouldn't want to do that. And, and in part because I don't think he gave us a complete list. I know we have a lot of consultant contracts and, and contracts out there that were not identified in your list of potential programs. So without, I wouldn't want to make that suggestion. I would expect you to come up with a recommendation for some cuts in the next fiscal year, with some of them coming from the project accumulation funds.
Okay, so we're, this is where we're going to, we're trying to whittle down here, and we're, we're trying to reach for this, but I think, I think realistically, we can, we can get to where we need to start anyway. And so, just going to reiterate, we're, we're on target for the 650. It's what we're, we're haggling over is the three-year timeline of fiscal year 17, 18, the $250,000 cuts, and how we go about that with 150 out of the project, project accumulation, and 100,000 out of the capital replacement. And then the outline years of 200 is what we are still going to be asking for our city manager to come back with some recommendations, based on the conversation we had, even up to what you were saying, hiring freezes and wage freezes, or whatever that would look like.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's various ways of controlling personnel costs. And it seems to me that, given that this problem we're facing is largely because of personnel costs, we have to somehow come up with some way to make some changes in, in personnel costs. I don't know how else to put it, but, because that's the source of the problem. That's why we are facing this. It's because of the additional costs that we're incurring.
The PERS costs.
Yeah, the PERS costs. And so somehow, we have to, we can't reach the point where the budget is 100% personnel, because, you know, that's just not sustainable.
So, so anyway, let's, let's, let's get there. So we're on the fiscal year 17, 18, and then the outline years, we had some general comments there. So basically, we had some consensus on, right off the gate, we had some consensus on using the 150 and 100 out of the accumulation and capital fund. And then we've, we've kind of haggled back and forth, so we have some, we have consensus. If someone were to pass a motion right now, saying we would just go with the project accumulation fund and the capital replacement fund, that's what I heard from Red, Matt, and to you, to some degree.
Part of it.
Yeah. And, you know, I made my comments on digging deeper than just the 150 and 100 at this time.
Right.
So we're, we're there.
Yes.
We can go ahead and move down that road if we wanted to. John, I know you wanted to, you're reaching for a motion, I'm just trying to circle it all together for a minute. That's, that's where I understand we're at. Okay, okay, emotion. So, and, go ahead.
Marlis, in terms of Jamie's point right now, talking about the $250,000 in this fiscal year 18, and the 150 and 100 coming from the two accumulation funds, but you're hesitant, I can sense you're hesitant about that. Would you be willing, perhaps, if we reduce the amount from the accumulation funds, and then as percentage from?
Cuts?
Cuts, yes.
Okay.
Other cuts.
Do you have any idea? And I think I can.
Well, we could, we could start at, what if we just cut that in half, and said half would come from cuts, and half will come from the accumulation funds?
So.
Your recommended cuts.
Yeah, so I, I think there's something else, you know, we're, based on, Dave, based on your comments, so you were saying we're 14 days behind schedule on building our budget. Not to say the seriousness of this, you know, means we have to make different course, but I'm trying, trying to be sensitive to being able to build our budget and, for this fiscal year, and get prepared for the things that we need to do, is what I'm trying to talk through. So I'm, I'm thinking your, the initial recommendation of the $250,000 cut for this year is based on staff recommendation as is, right? Yeah, knowing that, at what time are we going to be coming back? We have to start the, I would like to be able to have some discussions on the outline years of 17, or, excuse me, 18, 19, and 19, 20, sooner rather than later. And also, you know, we should have some conversation on, if we're talking about goals, that economic development strategic plan being part of that when we're, we're making. development strategic plan being part of that, when we're making that decision as well. So, you know, I feel like we can wrap this, wrap this up into where we're at already. I feel we're pretty close to being there. So...
A way to approach this, and we'll just need one decision, is we can bring several budget options with a prioritized list of cuts, essentially, and you could cut 100,000 from capital accumulation, or you can cut the teen center for 95,000, and you can prioritize that and find the 250 that we want to find. What I'll need to know now is, do you want us to lay anybody off on the 1st of July? Because that's the only way that we can, we're, I believe we're fully staffed right now. Police department is actually fully staffed, fire department's fully staffed, and maintenance team's fully staffed. And so, we're fully staffed in the general fund right now. So, in order to save any labor costs known in this coming budget, we would have to bring a layoff proposal to you in the budget, too.
Any comment on that? Is there not another way? Is there not a relative rate of increase for compensation adjustment, looking at a cost of living increase downward from maybe what you assumed in the model? That's another way. Another way might be healthcare cost contribution? So I guess, I'm not sure why layoff is...
If we're talking about, what I heard was prioritize $250,000 of cuts in fiscal year 18. And we could certainly look at pay freezes in going forward, that would likely be for fiscal year 19 and 20. We haven't planned, I guess there's 2% in the model for healthcare, potential healthcare contribution increase in 18, and we could, we can't really decide now not to do that because that's a matter of negotiation with our bargaining unit, so we can't, I can't balance the budget based on that without entering negotiations.
Could we just ask you to come back with alternatives, Dave, and not do it? Negotiate it right now? Is that reasonable?
Yes, so what expressed is we're...
The difficulty that would result from that is, he's saying we can't get direction from you to have the budget say X, if it doesn't leave any opportunity for real negotiations. So, I don't know if, if what you were suggesting was something that would still be able to fit into that process.
So if we, what I hear you saying is, let's come back during the budget process, and have a list of programs and savings areas to cut, and that this year, we're at least going to identify $250,000 of those to cut out of fiscal year 18 budget, and perhaps more, if we want to get a head start on the other $400,000 in 19 and 20. That is, we absolutely can do that, and what we can't do is, unless we're going to, I just want to bring the best product that we can back to you, and if you want us to include labor reductions in that, we can certainly do that, but I guess the point I was trying to make is, is we can't start saving on labor on the 1st of July of 2017 in this budget, because we're going to be cutting paychecks during that first pay period of fiscal year 2018. So, we absolutely must look at that in 2019 and 2020, and certainly, if somebody resigns or moves, then, depending on the position, but in many cases, we would put a freeze on that position, but we can't count on that. We can't build a budget that saves $250,000 counting on three people to resign, or something like that.
Okay, so, based on all that, we're, for, we're in agreement on item number one, the 650, this is just staff recommendation. Item number two, which is the timeline for fiscal year 2017 and 18, and the $250,000 cut, which you will come back to us with options, is, that's what you were just telling us. Okay, so we'll have some options, whether or not it's all project accumulation and capital, A, option, or B, some other cuts that we, you know, took some time to look at as well, and we're going to look at those as well. And then, 18, or, excuse me, FY 18, 19, FY 19, 20, those are outline years that we have to hit those targets, but we're not in that conversation yet. But we do have to, I guess the question would be, when are we going to be coming back and having those discussions?
Based on the discussion we just had, we're going to have a large part of that discussion in this coming budget cycle. Because you're going to have a list, not only of the 250, to find the $250,000 that you get to decide to de-prioritize this year, we're going to give you a list that totals a million. Maybe not a million, but we're going to give you a list that totals over $650,000, so you have some choice in there, and you can choose whether it's...
A reasonable list, right? A reasonable, I mean, I wouldn't expect anything different, right? A reasonable list that's going to be that 650,000. You know, when you say we're going to bring a list to a million dollars, what did you mean?
I just didn't do the, I mean, there's, we went through a very quick drill to identify program lines to cut. I think that totaled up about $700,000 there. If you add the $250,000 of the savings things, that's, so, there might be, and that was a pretty first blush, just to have some data at hand, that's not perfect data, to be able to give you, to see this conversation.
Can I just get a point of clarification on this, though? It wouldn't just be a list of programs that we'd have to cut, it would also, I assume, be some of these other options of, what if we have a hiring freeze and we don't replace people? What if we cut, we don't make the same contribution to health benefits? What if we have an employee, a hiring freeze? So, I mean, it's not just a programmatic list of things we could cut, but it's all of the other options for cutting costs, and what that would mean using our model, right?
Yes, absolutely, except, as we just discussed a minute ago, many of those we can't count on for this fiscal year.
No, I understand that, and I'm not talking about...
And that's why I was focused on programs and people...
I'll concede that, so if you're trying to make me understand, I get that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I meant in the subsequent, when you...
Absolutely.
Yes, that's, I just wanted to clarify then.
Red, sorry.
I have a couple of objections to proceeding the way it appears that we're proceeding. One is that staff has brought to us a clearly defined problem and a clearly defined solution. We're at a point now where we are 14 days past where we should be in our budget. They asked us to give them clarification to start preparing a budget, and I feel as if we are still kicking the can and not giving them clear directions. And the second objection that I have is that, that we've been given an option to take the money out of a couple of funds that are not being used, and now, we are throwing it back and saying, no, we want to make cuts in services or personnel. And I'm not willing to do that, because we don't have to do that. We just don't have to cut services at this point, and so, I am not willing to vote to do that.
So the scenario I heard was, we're going to come back with budget options, budget option A, that was the, hey, take the 100 and 150, just like that, right? And the other was, come back with some information that says, yeah, we're going to look at what, we're going to look at a little bit deeper, so we're going to have, when we come back with this, we're going to have not just this recommendation, we're going to have a menu of options. That's what I get out of our discussion. So, that's what, when we could make that decision then, on, okay, we're going to take option A, that may be the simple 100 and the 150, or maybe option B is going to be something, something that, a mixture of a couple of different things. So whether or not you agree with that, I'm, that's where we're at, and I would, I think we're there, and I agree. We want to give that direction. I think we've gone back and forth. I think it's been a healthy kicking of the can, because we're, you know, circling around it, trying to make a goal, you know, to some degree, but at this point, I think it's been a healthy discussion, and I want to see that, you know, we come back with options. I haven't reached, I haven't come to the conclusion that I'm ready to go 100% with just the way the staff recommendation came. I was just looking for options, and I think we can come back with that. And I think we can actually close with that, Red. I think absolutely, we've made, you know, every point on this recommendation about where we need to go in identifying the 650,000, the three-year timeline, and coming back with basically an option on how we get to that 250. One of the options can be the simple project accumulation fund and the capital replacement fund as one, and then the others, we're leaving it up to Dave to give us some options on maybe some deeper, digging a little bit deeper. And in essence, I think it'll be a good exercise to go through, for us to see what that's going to look like. And we may go right out of the box with option A, with a quick and easy 100 and 150, which we have here, but going through this exercise of digging a little deeper, I think it's going to be healthy for this council and the community to see what it's going to look like. So, that's, that's where I'm at. And I think, and so I just want to, I just want to confirm that, you know, we can agree to that. No? Okay, okay.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Dave, in terms of, right now, in terms of the recommendations that you've given us, in terms of making these two cuts to the accumulation funds, with, and I do believe the wording is in what you put into the staff report, is, you make this initial recommendation to make these cuts to these two accumulation funds, but staff is still going to be looking for cuts in, for the next two years of those, correct?
Exactly right.
So is there any benefit in terms of doing it now, or making arrests, seeing if we can get it passed now? Is there a benefit doing it two weeks ahead of time, or what would the benefits be of doing that?
Sorry, two weeks ahead of time?
So if we, if we were able to pass this tonight, and saying that we would take this $250,000 from the accumulation funds, knowing that staff is going to be identifying and listing future cuts to, for those next two years, 19 and 20, which is essentially what we're talking about doing, but in two weeks, is there a benefit from making this vote tonight versus two weeks?
I guess, one of the reasons that the staff recommended identifying the 250,000 from project accumulation and capital replacement, was that, A, so we can go build a budget based on that, and then, B, so that we could give you, and all of us, three months, six months, 12 months, time to go to the community and lay out all these different, because it's going to be more, you know, 250,000, there's still 400,000 left to go, and then that gives us an entire year to communicate with the community, with the workforce, with the labor unions, and to say, okay, there's 400,000 more coming over the next two years. And instead of putting you in the position of, in a budget study session, trying to decide whether it's the teen center, or a, or a third COP...
I don't want that.
Exactly, so that's why we recommended taking the easy $250,000 now of savings for future things. That gives us all a year to communicate with the community, with each other, with our constituents, with me, with my employees, and to say, there's, we got to find another 400 grand over the next two years, and here are all the different ways that they could come, from pay freezes, to hiring freezes, to teen center cuts, to one fire truck instead of two. And lay all those things out, and then we can move that direction over a period of two years, where we're dealing with things through attrition instead of layoffs, or with communication, and to identify other ways to keep the teen center open by partnerships or something like that, instead of having to make that decision very quickly in a, in a four-week budget process.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we direct staff to address the financial concerns identified in our 10-year budget forecast by finding $650,000 worth of cuts over the next three years, with 250,000 to be identified in fiscal year 1718, and with that to come from 150,000 in project accumulation, and 100,000 in capital replacement accumulation, with the stipulation that we are going to quickly address year two and three budget cuts of 200,000 each, with options presented to the council.
I'll second that.
Motion by Marlis, and second by Red. Any further discussions?
So I assume we concede the $4 million gap, which includes 2 million in streets, 1 million in facilities, a half million in basic capital improvements, and a half million in personnel salary, wages, and CalPERS issues in the future by that motion, and that the basic desire is to take money out of the bank, to, the only banking that we have, to just buy yourself a little time, I guess, in essence, and I'm opposed to it.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes for one. Okay, it's good work. It was work, but that's, that was good. Good discussion, yeah. Thanks, everybody, for keeping, circling around and getting through that. So, moving back to the agenda, that concludes item C2, which is the last item on the agenda. Thanks, everybody, for coming, and we'll move on to future agenda items. Any future agenda items? John?
Yeah, Mayor. I would like to get an update on the movement of the T-Bid program in-house. We haven't heard from Ms. Little recently regarding our marketing program, and also the county's marketing program. I know that, we keep saying that, you know, that TOT is flat, and, I mean, occupancy is flat, TOT is up, but based upon ADR, and I guess I'm concerned about that, and would like to know what's happening with that program, if I could get some support for that.
Okay, I'd support that. So we've got unanimous support on that? And I'll just work with, yeah, with Dave on getting that, getting that on, okay? Anybody else? None? Pretty quiet? All right. With that, we'll, our next meeting, regular meeting, will be held on Tuesday, March 28, 2017, at 6:00 PM, right here at the Vets Memorial Hall, and meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.